Have to do with the budget. I guess, do we need to wait for Lindsay to finish getting us online? Yeah, just don't click that button. Don't do end stream while we're streaming.
So I think we're live.
Okay. Cody, go ahead and start this discussion on our preliminary budget.
Okay, so just to begin with, as a reminder, like it's just a state law that we have to adopt our tentative budget at the first meeting in May. Just basically to show that we're working on that and those kind of things. So I've got the tentative budget put together. I've worked with Public Works about lunch with Andrea, with Mick. I've sat down with the mayor and went over the budget with some of the things. So I just wanted to point out some of the highlights and different things. And then, as always, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me at any point and we can do our best to answer. I know like Nate and we got some city staff here that can help too, Nate and Dave and Lindsay. And but I think most things are pretty consistent. So you can see I put together some charts like we usually have. So you can see there's not percentage wise, there's not huge changes in a lot of the funds. There is a couple of big ones, but overall, there's not like a ton of changes year to year. And you can see the dollar amount, it is just kind of interesting. So our general fund is just over half of like financially, the operations of the city. You can see stormwater is about 11%. Stewards about 14%. Our capital projects fund there is about 14%. And then we've got a couple of smaller ones.
Did you say that's a good proportion from what you're?
Yeah, you know, like it kind of depends on the services we offer. We're pretty lucky, I feel like, that we don't have to provide water and those things. If we had to provide water service, that would probably be another big triangle. But where we have Bonavista, that's awesome. And so I feel like, yeah, it's a pretty good mix.
So because basically all of our, most of our contracted services, I'll call them, that includes sheriffs, all that kind of stuff comes out of general.
Yep, yep, for sure.
And everybody's paying our contracted services through their regular taxes.
Through, yep, exactly.
Except for sheriffs, they're paying through us.
And then for the expenditures, you can see most of those are real similar too. We do have a couple of other ones that are big and we'll talk about those here in a minute. But they basically fall the same because the budgets balance. As far as the general fund goes, so this is the summary of the revenues. You can see I do have a few little changes, but like overall, I don't have a big increase in our sales tax, even though like when we talked last time, our sales tax is still going up. But we're being pretty conservative there. This other intergovernmental revenue, some of that is because of ARPA funding and those kinds of things that we had in 2024. Now we've almost spent all of that and so we just have less. The miscellaneous, well, I'll talk about in more detail here in one second, but that's like reimbursements and transfers.
I noticed that your line item on this one that you're showing for other govern, other intergovernmental, the numbers for fiscal year 24 and 25 didn't match the line items on the.
Or are they backwards?
Well, no, they were just a lot more.
Okay.
I know.
Oh, you know what? Okay. I don't know what happened on that one. Okay, I'll talk about those in detail here. It must've been when I was updating it that it didn't come across or didn't save it. Cause but yeah, those actually are these numbers right here.
Okay, those are the correct numbers.
These are the correct numbers right here. And you can see the biggest change and we'll talk more about that in a second. But a lot of that is because of those ARPA funds is why that's dropping. I know I fixed that, that's weird. And then this miscellaneous, like I was saying, this is largely due to transfers and reimbursements to the other funds. As far as expenditures go, you can see for the most part that admin is down. That's where we are spending the ARPA out of. And so that's why that's dropping. Because of some of the park grants and those kinds of things, that's why the park is up. And then the miscellaneous is due to those transfers and contributions. So just for your information, percentage wise, here's what the percentages are for the different funds. And my intergovernmental looks like is still with the other. But you can see like overall, we're relying on about 45% of our sales tax.
Go back to that real quick, if you don't mind. The oh, there, the second one down. So 10% is property tax.
Yep.
Of our total revenue.
Yeah, and if you remember, like they kind of use that analogy of a stool. And you don't want like a, like an old milk barn stool that you have like one leg. Like ideally, we'd have a bunch of different legs. So that if, cause a sales tax is great, but it's also the most volatile, right? So if the economy goes down, that leg can collapse a lot. And so we are fairly relying on sales tax, as you can see, like 45, 46%. And that's quite a bit. We are being conservative with the number, so hopefully that helps. So getting into the details now. So this up here at the top, you can see this is the prior year actual for 20, for fiscal year 23. We've got the current year budget. So that's this year's budget that we're in right now. This is the current year actual as of the time that I ran this report. This is the current year projected budget. So this is what I think we will be at for the year. And then this is the new year budget. So this last column is really the like most important column. But some of these other ones are still important, kind of to show where we're at and where we think we're headed and those kinds of things. So right now, I'm not proposing a tax increase. I think we can do everything in the budget right now where we're at. The reason this is higher than last year is if you remember, we always get a growth factor in there. And I never quite know what that's going to be. Because it really just depends on what was on the ground January 1st of this year versus January 1st of the previous year. So we usually budget a little high there. So that when that certified tax rate comes in, we'll reduce this to match that and we'll offset it with the sales tax.
Just to help educate us all, especially us new folks, when's the last time we actually did a truth and taxation process?
We talked about that last time, I believe it was about 2010, wasn't it? But we can look really quick. Oops, I got that backwards.
This site's available to any of us, right?
Yep, I'm just, I'm not even logged in. So this is just public and it's just tax rate site, utah.gav, it's certified tax rate. So when this is red is the last time we did a tax rate. So it's 2013 and then the previous one was 2010. So you can see it's been a while. You can also see that growth factor that I'm talking about. So right here, this new growth. So you can see last year, we got 99, 29 of new growth. Cause we're guaranteed a dollar amount, if you remember, right? So, so in theory, we were guaranteed this dollar amount of property tax revenues. But because of growth, we actually ended up getting a little bit more. And so this is for the tax year 2023, which would have came in during fiscal year 2024. That's the amount that I calculated from, yes. And so that amount is that, this amount right here. And so we should get probably about that 10 grand increase over that. So we should probably be about 365,000. But if we had more growth there, then we'll adjust this down to match that. We should get that number around like the 10th to the 12th of June. And so that will be one change to the final budget. Is that adjusting it?
Cody, for the new guy. If we haven't adjusted tax rates or what I saw was 11 years ago.
Right.
Is that going to be satisfactory going forward?
So the, I mean, it depends what you guys want, what service you want to provide and how you want to provide them. Just like we talked about last time, like you can implement a TIF and a TOF, or you can do a tax increase. There's advantages both ways. The disadvantage, it's been so long since we did a tax increase that I would imagine when we do a tax increase, that everybody, especially if it's big, like everybody's going to probably be in this room, right? And they're going to be here and they're going to be upset, even though in reality, they're paying a hundred dollars to the city. So if we doubled the rate, they'd be paying like $200. But yeah, and so some cities like South Ogden, what they've done is they do it every year. They go through TNT or not every year, sometimes every other year. And they just do smaller increases. Like I was talking to their finance director yesterday and they're proposing probably a 3% property tax increase.
I'm just thinking from an infrastructure standpoint, are we going to shortchange ourselves if we, if we're not careful? I just want to be careful.
Yep.
And not under shoot.
For sure.
Roads and maintenance and the things.
That was our, our rate. What was our rate in 13?
Um, it's right here. So it was point 00708. And you can see this was for last year. So our rate's now half because our home values have probably doubled since 2013.
And plus growth and other factors. But the rate that each resident pays is actually.
Cause in theory, each year our homes go up, right? So as they go up, the rate goes down by the same percentage roughly, so that we get the same amount of revenue. And so.
That's one of the most difficult things is the average citizen has no clue what that really means.
Right.
They just, you know, you're going to increase the rate and that's, they're upset about it.
Right.
And there are those that, those cities that do do it like every year, every other year. They've pretty much been able to sell, we're just holding the rate. Does people understand a rate?
The other thing about doing it more frequently, I mean, it's a balancing act. There's a definitely a cost to, to doing it, both like from an elect, you know, like from a political standpoint and physical cost, because we have to do a bunch of notices and things. So usually you're talking probably five to $10,000, depending on who else does it. Cause you can kind of piggyback on other people's notices and things. And so that's the other thing. We wouldn't want to probably raise our property taxes by like $5,000 or we would spend as much doing it as like we got the money. And so that's the other thing. It's kind of balancing it so that you get enough that it's kind of worth the effort, is what I would say.
You used the word cost and that's what's been kind of percolating in my brain is the cost of materials is going up.
For sure.
Are we, are we covered? That's, I just want to make sure we're covered.
And you know, like from all the city employees requests that I've got, like we've been able to fit them into the budget. So at this point, I would say yes. But it's something we're going to have to do at some point. Now, the franchise tax that we did a few years ago and some of those things, they've kind of saved us so that we didn't have to do a property tax and that we were able to kick that down the road a little further.
You have to be very careful when we, when we talk about the rates, though, holding it correct. So we, we have to ask, this is the amount of money we need. And then the rate is determined on that.
But you don't get to pick the rate.
But, but to simplify it, it makes more sense to like.
And that's what there's, and you can see, we talked about this last meeting too, but normally the rates drop. But remember last year, the home values actually went down just a little bit. And so that's why the rate went up here from the point 00349 to the point 000354.
Yeah, property taxes actually went down.
Yeah, depending on, well, dependent on your home value. Like if your home value went down, then your property taxes probably went down. But if your home value went up, because there was some that still went up, then that was the case. And so.
Calling myself an average homeowner.
Right. So it just kind of depends, there's a lot of factors there and what you guys would like to do. And obviously, you know, like best practices wise, you've seen that chart. You know, like we're, well, you can just see it here, like how much we're budgeting for sales tax versus property tax. Like we're way more reliant on sales tax. The other thing we'd have to be careful of is you can kind of shortchange yourself on that growth. Like let's say we had a huge, like, let's say 2,700, we got four new businesses on 2,700 one year. And then next year, we went to raise property taxes. If we didn't raise them enough, because we have to say we want this dollar amount. So if we got a ton of growth one year and we didn't say we wanted to go up enough, we'd actually kind of lose the growth.
We could say we need X. And then we don't have to, we don't have to apply that until like almost June, correct?
Right.
So that we could look at that and maybe we only need Y, but doesn't, doesn't that give us that flexibility?
Right. So we would have to be careful. We wouldn't want like this time of year to be like, yeah, we're doing TNT and this is how much money we want. We'd want to wait until we have these numbers from the county so that we could look at it. And then just as a reminder, whatever we say, this is how much money we need, we can't increase that after we've.
Maybe our ask would be a little bit more, knowing that we could actually.
Pull it down.
We can pull that down right up until June of next year, correct?
Correct. And that's what like South Ogden and some of those do is they like overestimate just a little bit. And then usually most years, they end up pulling it down a little bit. So their increase isn't as big as they originally said. So.
An average, sorry.
And, and just the translation, when you say TNT, that's truth and taxation.
Truth and taxation.
For those of us that are.
Yep. And so what that means is basically we wouldn't adopt a budget. It's kind of weird because we have to have a budget adopted by the second meeting in June, unless we're going through truth and taxation. And then basically we enact what's called an acting budget. So we basically say, we think this is what our budget's going to be. And then depending on how all the dates fall around like August 15th to 18th, we would have a city council meeting. And that's where we'd actually have our public hearing to implement our property tax increase. And then at that point, we would adopt a final budget.
And interesting, the last increase we did, we did the re, we justified it because of the increased cost of the sheriff's department. And it's interesting to see how much more the sheriff's department is now compared to even 2013. I bet you.
We've done very well.
It's, you know, we've been able to cover stuff.
We have been, and like just, we'll talk about it in a minute, but the sheriff's office is about 700,000. So in 2013, I think we had this match, almost where the sheriff's office was, like you said. And so now we're about 300,000 behind on our property taxes, if you will. Any other questions on property taxes?
We look at a household number, you know, I mean, it depends on the household, but we're talking dollars. We're not talking hundreds, we're talking dollars on the.
Correct. You know, like, and that's where it comes back, like, I don't know if you remember last time we looked at. Yeah.
An average.
Yeah, is that okay if we look at yours again?
Absolutely.
For some reason.
My, my, my 110 bucks a year towards the city. I think that's what it was.
Just want to keep this in our, I'm sorry for sidelining you, but I want to keep this in our heads.
Yep, no, you're just fine.
Tax history.
Yeah, but it's tax history and then, and then we won't be able to see anything yet because they haven't finished. But come on update. So just really quick, so you can see they, and they provide this on your notices too. So you should see this. So 53, almost 54% goes to school. 21, 20, 21% goes to the county. Other special districts are 22. And then you can see our city portions whopping 3.42%. If you want to see that in dollar amounts, you can flip that right there. And you can see, so the mayor paid a hundred dollars and 66 cents in property tax to the city last year. So you can see, even if we doubled that, it would be, you know, like $202. But the bad thing is like the standard examiner and some of that, and even in the notice, we have to say we're doubling the rate. And so, you know, it's just public perception versus reality. Yeah, right.
Nobody reads the paper.
Right, right. So it's, it's okay, but anyways, any other questions? And once again, you can look all this up. This is just on the Weber County website. So you can just go to Weber County parcel search if you'd like to spend more time looking at that. So all of that comes into here. So that's where we've got that. That's where the sales taxes, we talked last time, we're still doing good. We've been collecting a little extra sales tax. So I feel confident about that number. However, if you read some of the forecasts and stuff, it's across the board. You know, some economists are like, we're in a recession. Some are like, we're headed for a recession. And other people are like, we're fine. So I don't know, we'll just have.
From other mayors, they're like, I know Mayor Dandaway from Roy, for instance, he's like, we're flatlining on sales tax. Maybe they are, I don't know. Riverdale might be different.
Riverdale's starting to take down. So, but you know, that's all different depending on who you have in your city and how much you get from population versus point of sale and all those things. Our franchise fees, you can see they're kind of staying flat, but we've been doing pretty good. We've been getting about 350,000 revenue there.
More than we had expected to.
And so you can see with that and that combined, we are covering that public safety bill. So by implementing that a couple of years ago.
It's safe just. We were, we were hoping for 200,000, you know, so this is good.
We were pretty sure they were charging that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, they very well could have been, for sure.
Bill when they say, you know, on other taxes.
It's like when we talk to the guy about the Airbnb tax.
Oh, yeah.
So other things here, some of these other ones aren't quite as interesting probably. So the licenses and permits, you can see, it appears Nate's been really, really busy this year. Cause look at how many, like we've got a lot of building permits and plan check fees. So I don't have that budgeted as high as we are at this year, just because who knows what will happen with the economy and things. But, but we have done really well this year. Our intergovernmental revenues, I do have some money in there for those Mountain View grants that Katie's been working on and applying for the city. This is how much money we have left of our ARPA funds as of last month, when I filed our report and kind of did a reconciliation of that. So, so we've got that set aside to go towards the public works facilities. So the rest of that should be spent here. We need to really spend that by the end of the year. Charges for service.
2024.
We really need it encumbered by the end of 2024, but it'd be good if we just had it out the door by the end of the year, if possible. You can see the rec center is doing well, like our, appears our attendance is back up. Like we're on track to do better than we did last year. We had pulled this down because our revenues weren't as high and so we're doing pretty good there.
We have a couple of questions for you on this one.
Yeah.
So it looks like, okay, on the senior center activities, why have, um, why are we collect actuals only 1355?
I honestly don't know on that one. It probably depends on what activities we have and what they are collecting for. Cause a lot of that, like the mayor and I talked about this, this week or last week, it would depend on what they were doing. And so like if they would have had a dinner the previous year.
We're collecting money for dinner.
That doesn't go to us, that goes to Weber Human Services.
No, 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 when we have like our city, this, when we have our dinners and like the, the senior center hosts them.
I think she puts it back into the petty cash.
So she's not depositing them back.
Still feeding and replenishing as they.
Yeah, like that should be deposited back.
Let's have a chat with her on that. That was a little, that just came to my attention. And then on flag football fees, it looks like.
So some of that could be timing, just depending on when they come in. And you know what, some of these get coded down here into the recreation fees. So it depends on if Mick has those received into the right fund. So they're the right account. Sometimes they get broken out. We've talked about that before, like we could break those out so that every program had its own fees. If you wanted this, look at that, but then that would require them to do a little more work on the cash receiving side of things and just break stuff out.
Does it really make that big of a difference whether it's itemized or whether it's lumped?
Only if you guys want to look at programs and be like, is it worth offering flag football? Is it worth offering this? Otherwise, it doesn't really matter.
And then on the baseball and softball field fees, our last year actual was 2,600, but we've been, we, it looks like we've been budgeting about 17,000. Is that, that seems like a big.
I think it's because we had less participation during COVID. And so I just left that number the same. Like I asked Mick again this year, is there any changes I need to make to any of these? And he's like, no. And so I just leave them all alone for the most part, if they tell me to leave them alone. But we could pull that down. So.
And I mean, it's, it's revenue, I mean, so.
Right. Our justice court fines, you can see we are doing really well, like they are up. They've been Ryan Lutz tickets. Yep. Miscellaneous, you can see I've got, we've got park impact fees in here. We do need to do that new study like we talked about last time. So that could go up or down, depending on what ends up on that park impact fee study. You can see our interest is way up, which is good that, you know, we have cash on hand. And so the PTIF is doing really well this year.
Look up there, I can see it.
Oh, is it not showing up on the screen?
On the screen, it's just red.
Got it. So I'm budgeting 100,000 if you can't see that number.
It's just hard to see, feel real close to the screen.
Which is less than we've collected the previous year. So. And then you can see this special revenue fund, this is really just the miscellaneous too. So I got some rollovers.
Back to miscellaneous, um, contributions and miscellaneous revenue. What is captured, what's.
Contributions usually would be like somebody giving a donation. Miscellaneous is, can be everything. So if we get like a refund from health insurance, like that'll go in there. If we get like, like insurance proceeds that are like, and if an employee gets in an accident in their vehicle and that crosses years, that can go in there. Like there's tons of different things that go in there. And so it can fluctuate a lot year in and year out. That's why like the previous year is only 16 and this year it's 44.
The miscellaneous of the miscellaneous.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of just the catchall.
And then on Freedom Festival, we've, we've estimated 15,000 in revenue, but it looks like we've not collected that dollar amount in the past.
So we did before, but ever since like the dinner went away and some of those things and COVID, like.
We're not collecting that.
Our revenues have went way down on that.
Okay.
Going to food trucks or to, which.
So we could pull that down too.
And I don't know that we ever really, I don't know, we, we never made money on Freedom Festival.
No, I don't think we ever made money. We just received a lot more money because we spent a lot more money on all the supplies for the dinner and things. And then these are my rollovers. And then because I have to budget for a transfer for the capital projects funds, we're not over on our fund balance. This is the offset to that. So that's all the revenues in the general fund. This doesn't break it up very well. So this red line is kind of my divider. For like kind of citywide facts on the employees, Andrea has done the survey. Per, per the city policy, the average increase is about 9.1%. Health insurance went up 5.2% and dental was 1.6%. So all those feed into these line items. As far as other increases, you can see our audit has been going up. This estimate, sometimes Cassell does weird things with those estimates and I try to catch them all and adjust them, but I missed that one. So that we've paid for our audit now, so it's going to be closer to that amount. But you can see it's went up a little bit every year. So I bumped that up.
I was shocked to see that we paid more for our audit than we do for our engineering fees.
Yeah, and that's not all of our engineering, because some of our engineering is reimbursed, but, but yeah.
Well, I figured, yeah.
Yep. And then I also pulled up like our insurance, because it looks like it's trending up. And so I bumped it up a little bit too.
What is that maintenance contract?
Um, I don't remember. I think that's the building maintenance, isn't it? The cleaning? I'd have to go back and look on that one. So this is how much money we have left over on the ARPA. For the court, same thing, those are the citywide facts. Our legal court services are up. Part of that is, I believe our new public, or our new prosecutor is a little more expensive than Ryan was. And then also in talking to Andrea, they're, the judge is using the public defender more. And so that is making that go up, because that's like $200 a case. So for every case he assigns a public defender, we're paying $200. So that's up, but you can see.
That doesn't come under our blanket amount?
It doesn't.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, shouldn't it come under that? I didn't know we had what we're paying them plus. I didn't know we had what we're paying them plus.
Well, public defender.
The public defender is separate than the prosecutor, but they both.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm with you.
And the judge.
Claiming that no money get public defenders.
And the judge can, Paul can assess a, a fee to recoup that public defender charge. He just doesn't always do it. And so that's a conversation we could have with Paul and be like, hey, we really need you to, if the public defender is being utilized, they need to pay for the services. Because you can see like, so total budget for the courts, a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Uh, sorry, traffic school, were we not doing that before? And that's now why it's.
Well, court volumes have went way up because during COVID, there wasn't near as much volume.
It went from zero. Actuals in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three.
Oh, for the traffic school? I think it depends how they pay because a lot of times don't they pay for traffic school directly? So that must have been something that we paid for. Because there's a brand new program called deferred prosecution and they do the traffic school now. So that's taken a lot of the play in advances away. And so.
We're paying for it, but not collecting anything back for.
Well, we're really not paying for it. They pay for it. I don't know what this three hundred and ninety-eight dollars was. I'd have to look it up. They have to pay the state directly. For it. That must have just been a charge or something we had to do. But we're not paying for it for their individuals. But you can see we're losing money on our court right now. Because our budget's like one twenty-four and our revenues are about the ninety, which is okay. But we're just spending a little bit of money on the court. It's not breaking even. Um, building, so this is, we created this new department last year. That's why it's not here. Um. So in theory, what the state would like us to do is all those billing permits, we should be. Almost like reserving those or restricting those and, um. Paying those out in building. Now we can carry them over because some years, you know, like they may pay their billing permit at July or June thirtieth. And then all the inspections are the next year. Part of this, I talked to the mayor about this and Nate a little bit, we might need to change Nate's allocation. So right now he's split fifty fifty, but if he's spending most of his time in building, we really should change that allocation because of that.
So then where would the, the, where in this is it represented that his wage would come out of?
So right now, part of it comes out of admin, I believe.
Okay.
And then the rest goes in building or it goes, sorry, not admin out of this general government building. So we'd need to move part of that is what I think we should do, but I wanted to talk to you guys about that before we did it.
So if we coded Nate all in building, then. The salaried employees line for general governmental buildings should decrease.
Right. It would just be an offset. It would just move from the one account to the other.
Just changing money, you don't.
Right. But then if the state comes to us and is like, how much are you spending on building? It's really easy now to look at it and be like, well, we're spending that. And that's, we still don't have this account a hundred percent. Um, we still need to make sure that everything we're paying for, for building comes into this. Um, so we'll keep working on that, but it's getting better. And then it makes it easy to report if the state asks us the question, we've already kind of got the answer.
Account, so it takes a minute to figure out what.
Exactly.
But if you, if you move Nate completely into that account, that would be that eighty-two thousand.
Still do a split, wouldn't you? Just.
Yeah, probably just a smaller one. Yeah.
Percentage allocation.
Like right now we're fifty fifty, so it might be like eighty, twenty or ninety, ten or something.
I'm just trying, it's like a sixty-eight percent increase. I'm trying to understand.
I'll talk about that in just a second here. You're jumping again, just this tiny bit. So one other thing that the council or the, they were proposing. Is they would like to add a new employee. And so they would like to add that, a portion of that to building. My concern is, is they'd like to add another like lead employee. So usually per our policy is a lot of that, like if you look at the job descriptions as a lead needs to supervise. So right now we kind of have Nate and Robbie and Dave that are all leads. So do we have enough employees to, to be supervised to have another lead? Um, the reason they want to lead is because of some of the responsibilities they would assign to that position. But that's kind of what they're proposing. And so the allocation for benefits and wages. Um, right now, how we have them allocated, and I'll talk more about this as we go, is that like put thirty-three percent in building, thirty-three percent in sewer and thirty-three percent in stormwater.
For a new employee.
For a new employee. And the total is about fifty-six percent or fifty-six thousand for wages and benefits per.
We need to make him a lead so that they can be classified as.
That's up to you guys if.
Then they get classified as, as salary, right?
Right.
And then.
But they really need to like supervise.
They would be responsible for. I'd look to you guys for that.
Nate, you want to explain the lead position?
Need a crew of, one, two other people to do sidewalks, curb gutter, um, street striding, um, so they'd be kind of independent during the seasons on that.
Would it be seasonal people that they would lead or would it, because we're, we're out of, we're out of full-time people to lead, right? Okay.
Um, that's just, just another responsibility. Those are other responsibilities are just a little too much for, for lead Dave probably to take on in addition to what we're already doing.
And also didn't you want them to have inspection certs, for instance, qualified for that?
Take some pressure off of you and, and this would be the allocation because of what you're talking about, all these things. So. Would that qualify for a lead to have these temporary or seasonal people?
Yeah, it just depends because like, does Dave supervise all the seasonal now? So do we have enough people that we can, and that's up to you guys.
Bring that person from within up.
That's what we would hope.
Okay.
But again, it's like if we're required to have certain certs, or people that we have to bid.
Willing to get them.
To get those certs.
Okay, fair. Okay.
And we're just making an assumption on the wage. I would say we shouldn't pay somebody on that pay scale or that high a level until they have those certs. Like that's what most people would do is they would bring them in at a lower and then give them a time period to get those certifications before we're paying them. For that. The other concern I have is they didn't want to add a vehicle and I don't really feel like that's. Right. If we're, if we've got every other public works employee that has vehicles. They felt like we had other vehicles that they could drive, but I think. We've got a rotation kind of figured out and we probably really should add another vehicle if we're adding another employee. And the reason I feel like that is we're not really adding the true cost of that employee if we're going to turn around next year and add another vehicle. But that's up to you guys too. If you want to utilize vehicles we have now, that's fine. But if we want to try and stay on the same rotation and stuff, we probably really need to build another vehicle in there as well.
Yeah, and they survive without another vehicle.
Well, now, and I would say, well, can we survive temporarily? But then are we kicking the can down the road?
Going to do it next year, then let's get it.
Let's just pull the Band-Aid and do it, is what I think. Like, let's just do it if we need it. Not.
Goes back to some of those discussions we had when we were changing the employee handbook about. It like employee vehicle usage and it's something we should probably. Look at that again to see what the employee handbook says too.
And I think what it said, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it said as long as they live within like fifteen miles of the city, they should be eligible.
Because of non-call and because of those are the things we felt like that was.
That just.
Right. And so like, I would assume as long as somebody don't leave, live further away from there, you know, like we probably should provide a vehicle for doing it for everybody else. But that's up to you guys. It's not in the budget, that vehicle. Um. But that's just my thoughts. I'm also, in a minute, I'll talk to you about the sanitation fund and we got to keep moving and we're going to run out of time.
Miscellaneous, is that where the certs would fall under? A new vehicle? Because you're showing zero and we had a thirty-two hundred. Was that a one time?
No, that's just a miscellaneous account. Like I said, we haven't got everything a hundred percent moved over here. And so we just moved some money last year trying to have enough money for Nate to pay for building stuff. And especially if we're adding another employee in there, we might need even more money in here, especially if we're paying for trap, like training and things for that. And so it's kind of our best guess for the time being. So. Um, and I'm going to go fast here because we got to make up a lot of ground here. So general government buildings, you can see not a lot of changes. We just pulled the utilities up because we've been averaging high. Public safety, from talking to the mayor, he said Boyd had the information, but. The county's not going up. I bumped.
I think it's seven oh eight this year.
I like do a small tick.
Yeah, just a small tick down. So it's.
Within.
So I guess just a little higher. The animal control is really hard because it depends. We have like a contract amount plus then it depends on like animals. So I bumped that up some because it looks like we are going up and it kind of goes up and down and up and down and.
Trending up right now, just so you're aware.
So I went up hoping that we'd have money there. We.
That's, that's probably not a bad plan there.
Okay. We do have some cert money in the budget. We have five thousand dollars in the current budget. I left it at five because I hadn't heard another number. Um, so we got five grand to spend before June thirtieth and then we'd have another five thousand. Um. Highways and public utilities, like most of that stayed the same. The one change that public works wanted is they wanted to change the allocation. So we added a little more money to, out of the local option for trails. Um, and we talked last time, I don't know, what I would prefer with the transportation utility fee is if you'd like to do that, I think we should postpone that and do it more in the fall. Are you guys okay with that?
I think we had talked about waiting until, because they needed to do a study for it. And so waiting for that to come through and then amending the budget then.
Okay. And you guys are all good with that? Is that kind of a consensus on that? Um, the transportation impact fee, I think we asked them on that. If we could, like, do you want us to start a study? I can't remember if you studied. Okay. So we've got that going too. So just FYI, that's where that's at.
You mentioned those flock cameras.
I will in just a second. Oh, you know what? I missed it. And I don't have Flocks cameras in the budget right now. So if you guys would like to add those, I need to know that and I need to know how much money.
What we've been discussing.
We've been discussing three more, buddy.
Hey.
That would be about three thousand each, right? Twenty-five.
Yeah, it's like.
We need roughly ten to cover.
Yeah.
So would you guys like to budget for flock cameras? Would you budget for those?
I believe yes. I think we need to be a, a team player here and I think we could control a lot of things in the, in the city and the county if we had. The one we have now and three others at least, so.
I think you also have to plan for yearly fees for that as well.
Yes, we will. Because I think the yearly fees are almost the same.
Ten thousand dollar budget on that would be what I would request.
Save that much, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, parks, we got like just citywide facts. We left the seasonal wages the same. Um, we might need some unrestricted money for those Mountain View, um, park projects. Part of that will depend on what the impact fee study comes back with. The other thing, we can talk more about this. We have been paying for some of the public works facility out of that park impact fee, but I don't think it's really included in there. And so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind for once, for a minute. We'll. And then I've got the grant expenditures.
That's worst case scenario. That's if none of our other grant funding comes through.
Right. But we probably ought to budget that way because I think it's your intention to move forward with it regardless of if we get more grants, right? Um, senior center, we left it pretty much the same, just the citywide facts. One thing to keep in mind. I think the mayor's mentioned a little bit, Weber, I've been to some of the meetings, Weber County is really. Responsible for a lot of the senior services and they're looking at consolidating some of those and even maybe providing. Different things with mills on wheels and those kind of things. So. Nothing's been decided at this point, but we might need to reevaluate this next year and see if you still want to continue doing the same thing, which is great. Or if you feel like what the Weber Human Services is offering is sufficient, or we want to do something different, move some of this money to recreation. Anyways, I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar.
I, I spoke with some of the other mayors on that because they were, they mentioned, we had that meeting, mayors and all that kind of stuff, and we've heard crickets since from.
So from what I know, Weber Human Services has been reaching out to other entities who have senior centers. And has been talking to them directly before they unveil their full plan of action.
Well, then it sounds like maybe we need to make some calls.
So.
Well, and I don't think our senior center is probably going to get funded.
Get that much. We don't get their services.
Well, wasn't it, there was talks that they were going to charge us?
Well, they wanted to.
I don't, I don't think that's the direction it's going at this point. I think it's going that they may not even provide us mills in the future. That they're just going to have a couple regional facilities and those are the facilities people are going to have to go to if they want to participate in those services.
Well, because you know, a lot, all of seniors strive, right?
Right. Well, a lot of people say that, but then a lot of the seniors, if you really talk to them, they bounce around to a bunch of different seniors centers too. So I don't know. We'll have to see what happens. And they do have the ride, Weber Human Services. So they could actually, some of the cities have talked about having them pick them up at like their city hall. And transport them. So anyways, just so that's kind of on your radar. Um, recreation, you can see for the most part, it stayed pretty much the same.
Why was there such a jump in our baseball supply budget?
Because he wants to do covers for the dugouts on Two Thousand West.
Oh, okay.
So. And fishing clubs averaging a little high, so I bumped that up. Um, miscellaneous, I've got a bigger transfer to capital just in case our revenues are up. I also increased the transfer to the capital asset replacement fund and I'll talk more about that in just a second. So we do have the CDA fund and the mayor and I talked about this, just to give you guys like a ten, like a twenty thousand foot overview. So we have like a CDA, RDA, CRDA, whatever you want to call it. Um, we have a board set up. This is the fund associated with this. However, we do not have like a project area really set up. And we don't have any property taxes coming in. This is just money that we've been unrestricted money. We've been transferring from the general fund to this fund so that we have some money if we need to do something. So this.
I'm going to talk a little bit about that in my assignments.
So that would give us some money, like if we needed to pay an attorney or do an appraisal on things or set up some RDA areas. So we've been doing that and we have some money sitting aside. That's what that fund is. The sewer fund. Um, Central Weber does their increase based upon, um, and you, you'll know more, but based upon how many people, like the growth in the size value. And their increase this year because of everything, our increase was basically zero. It was like twenty bucks or something. Um, so I don't have an increase in their budgeted. However, we are putting some new wages in there and that's about fifty-six thousand. So depending on how you want to look at that. Between the wages and benefits, if we put that on the expenditures, it's about six point two nine percent. However, you can see. We did have a surplus at the end of the year. So I don't know if you guys want to do a rate increase. Like his, the last couple of years, we've only done it based upon what Central Weber did, but where they were basically flat. Um, and I tried to look at this so that we are looking more conservative. We weren't looking at like budgeted numbers. But I don't know if you want to do a rate increase because we're adding that employee or if you're okay just riding it where we're at or not.
It's to a rate, rate increase and then potential TNTs too. So. I mean, we're.
Hold for now.
My feeling is hold with that this year because of that surplus, but. Look at it again next year.
Yeah, it's kind of how I feel about it.
Okay. Okay. Well, then I won't propose a rate increase there. So same thing in stormwater. Um, I don't have any rate increase. If you remember, we doubled our rate not long ago. Um, over there, it's a little more of a percentage, but we still have a surplus there. So we're going to, you know, we want to make profits in those funds. We have money available, but if you guys are okay with it, we wouldn't have to do a rate increase. We do have the public works allocation there for part of that new site. Um, so that's stormwater sanitation. So the transfer station right now isn't saying they have an increase. Our hauler would like a five percent increase. So I'd recommend we just pass that five percent fee through. One of the things in talking to Nate, we don't have any wages allocated here. So I would propose possibly that we allocate, uh, maybe a third from one of the other enterprise funds to this fund. He said they estimate they spend about twelve hours a week. Um, delivering garbage cans, picking up garbage cans, doing that kind of thing. So we're really like undervaluing these services, not having any wages in there. And so that would be my recommendation now that we're hiring a new employee, that we might as well throw a portion of that in there so that it's kind of in the right spot. Is that okay with everybody? But I wanted to talk to you guys before we did it because we haven't put anything in here. The other thing, we haven't allocated any public works facility costs to this fund. Kind of for the same reason, but if we're housing garbage cans and we're housing an employee, we, we probably should maybe look at allocating some of the costs here as well. I mean, in one way, it's like pulling it from one pocket to the other, but if, but to represent the true cost of those services, we're kind of short. we're kind of shortchanging that.
I think it's appropriate that we have it in the right spot. We, we should add that.
So are you guys okay with that? If we put it like a third of the wages in sanitation, is that okay?
It was reasonable to me.
Okay. Um.
I think it helps us down the road with evaluating how, how we should do this, so.
I think so too. I think. Yep. Um, so capital asset replacement. So in this fund, we've been buying a lot of stuff. We only have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash on hand right now. And we need to do those truck rotations. We've committed to buy a mower and like a plow truck. So I really just have that. I don't have any new things in here because, and that's why I've increased the reimbursement from the the capital projects or from the general fund so that we're getting more money into this fund to help cover the rotation of those vehicles. And so I'd say this year, we just kind of need to hold off. If we're going to buy a new truck from those, that new employer. Did I hear a consensus on that? Do we want the new, a new vehicle added to? So what I would propose, we probably do, especially if we allocate them to the enterprise funds is we probably ought to kind of front load that and transfer some money from the enterprise funds to this fund, help offset the initial purchase of that truck.
Don't we need to put the new tractor in this too?
Yeah, and that's where like we really don't have any money this next year to buy any new equipment. We really like spent everything we will have.
What happens if the plow truck comes through?
Well, in theory, like we get the new trucks and we trade in the old ones. So those should be pretty flat. So we should be fine. And then we're going to keep transferring money every month for the rest of the year. So we should be okay. It's just we really don't have a lot of money to say that, hey, we need to buy another thing. We're kind of stuck for the time being. Um, capital projects fund. So really quick here, we're doing really good on interest because we've got some money sitting there. We have roughly like three and a half million dollars sitting there. So eh, when I got the breakdown for the public works facility, we have that allocated here for a portion of it for the general fund activities. Um, I also put some money in here for a property purchase and then for some um, Adams easement or property improvements such as a gate and a few things.
To communicate what that is.
Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Well, we don't know. There's some other things there and they don't know what kind of gate and those kind of things. So that's what public works felt like they, they wanted budgetarily. Just so they had some money until they got it all figured out.
I'd like to get a little better idea of what is included in that before we.
I have a, I have a firm bid on a gate for a recreation HOA. And with an opener, it's twenty-three thousand five hundred with an opener.
So we're not doing an opener.
Yeah, so, so I think if you look at that, we, we're much less than that. You're probably in the neighborhood of twelve thousand.
That's not how much it's going to cost us.
Yeah.
And some of that I think depends on the council because I think you guys were like, we might, they may want an automatic gate, but that's up to you guys. I think what you're going to pay for and staff.
We don't want.
And so like, but they felt like budgetarily, that's what they wanted in there. And so that's what we did. So, so let me tell you a couple of my other concerns. I talked to the mayor about some of these. So he mentioned that potentially there's some property acquisitions that may need to occur. So we've got like three and a half million dollars sitting in capital projects fund. So if we needed to spend that money to buy some property. If we spend that money to like four hundred thousand on the public works facility and things, we may not have enough money depending on the dollar amount you're talking for a property purchase because that would need to happen out of this fund. The other concern I have a little bit about the public works facility is if we really want to pay for some of that out of the impact fees until we have those new analysis, analyses, we really can't allocate those costs to like the park impact fees and those things. So I don't know, and a lot of this is totally up to you guys. But if you wanted to pay cash for some property, it might be wise to hold off a little bit on that next phase of the public works facility until we see how the end of this year goes and how much money we're able to transfer to the capital projects fund, we might be just fine. Like if we're able to transfer the same amount of money as we transferred last year, we might be just fine. But if you end up spending like four or five million dollars on property uh, or a bunch of money on property, we're going to need like every penny we've got too.
What is included in phase three of that?
You'll have the.
So it's basically the hard surface of everything else that floods on the sites, parking lot, putting foundation, uh, flooring, the floor. The building itself would be in the last weeks.
So right now, like I've got it in the budget, it fits. But if you want some flexibility there, we can leave it in the budget, but I don't, you may not want to move forward with it for a couple of those reasons, especially if we want to use more restricted money to pay for it. And if you want to keep that unrestricted money around, if you decide to do some.
Personally, we think we leave it in there, but we, we, we look at it closely when this comes up. So we, thank you for the heads up on that. So we're watching that.
And then were you able to talk to Cody mayor about the just utilities to Meadow Park?
So we have this.
Park impact fees.
We have money in there for park impact fees. Now, once again, it's not really in our analyses. But we put some money in there in that account because they talked about that. And so.
I think it was more like Robbie was talking about like getting stormwater and, and sewer and power there, but.
And s- some of that, like the sewer, we can pay for maybe out of the sewer fund, but the power we got to pay for out of like either parks or capital project fund or those things. And so like ideally would do that out of the impact fees, but until we have that analyses. You know, it's kind of like, what do we do next? So just to recap, I know we only have like two minutes. So I'm going to put some money in there for flock cameras. I'm going to put some money in there for the grant match if we can't use impact fees. I'm going to change the allocation for that new employee so that they go to sanitation and add a new vehicle for them. And then we're going to leave it a lead. And then you guys are going to decide timing wise on the public works facility before we move forward. Does that sound okay to everybody? Anything I missed?
Just one thing that's on the agenda tonight, but how much did we pay last year for the, the uh, junior livestock?
The junior livestock? I'll have to look.
And is that budget, is it budgeted this year?
I don't have anything specifically budgeted.
We have anything that covers those things when they come up, you know, that when they.
So and some of that comes back to Liam. I personally think from looking at state code, like you guys almost need to have a public hearing to, to give money to a nonprofit. I don't know if Liam's looked at that, but.
Are you talking about what you just sent me?
No, like they want to make a donation to like a nonprofit.
Junior livestock or uh, what are the?
Or like YCC or CJC or any of those.
That's not in the budget?
No, we, we want it to be in the budget. That's why we're looking at the budget. If it's in the budget, do we have to have a hearing to transfer that money to them?
Oh, no, not if it's already been discussed in the budget as a, an expense that the, within the city's ability to pay, then you guys will have the discretion to do that.
And I just don't know that we did that with the junior livestock last year because I think we'd already kind of done the budget.
And would it have to be, be line item for that? Would it have to stay? Or could it just be like charitable contribution and it could go to anybody?
I think we should, personally, I think from state code, we need to have it specifically designated, like we're giving this much money to this organization.
What we'd like to have on this.
And we can add that, like, so this budget note, like public works facility site three, I, we can add those and I think that meets the requirement. I just don't have it in the current budget and I can add it to this budget.
What we've already done is done, but this would come out of potentially this budget. So if we want to make sure we're covered. So how does that look? And what do you, you know, the amount that we.
I don't know the amount. We can probably find it.
Thousand.
Was it two thousand?
I think that sounds right.
It's two thousand, so.
And are you going to want to do that annually?
Actually, because, I mean, it's up to the council, but potential.
You ask them if they're going to do it annually.
I think you're going to because they're, yeah.
Well, they've been cut off from the county.
And I think it's one of the few that we really ought to support.
I, I agree with that.
This is the only thing I would say is like, I feel like the county more and more tries to get cities to pay for stuff. And what is our core services is providing the livestock option are core services. Is that really the city's responsibility? And that's totally up to you guys.
It's the number of participants that we get from the city that do that. I think that's what we're supporting.
Right, but is.
Supporting community involvement in that.
Right, but is that really a core service of a municipality to provide that service? And that's for you guys.
It's our youth. It is our core value. I, sorry, that's, that, thanks for that, but yes, I think we, we invest in our youth.
Could be questioned, but I, I would fall on the side that yes, that's our responsibility to look out for the youth of our city.
Hey, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Cody. Any quick questions before we get into our official regular meeting?
Well done.
Thanks, Cody. Are you going to stick around for when we, oh, no, you, well, you. I'm, I'm moving that up a bit. It, it could be argued.
It's our core values.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. This is our regular uh, city council meeting, starting at six thirty two. Uh, we just had a budget session, so we had a lot to talk about, so it took us over a couple of minutes, but well worth it. We could probably use more time for some of those kinds of things. Um, but things we got to do. So we're going to start off with an opening ceremony. Uh, Boyd is going to offer us a prayer and then I'll lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful this evening to be gathered here as a city council and members of the community. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for this opportunity. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve, serve the citizens of, of far west. We're grateful for the good community that this is and the good things that go on here. We're grateful for the ideas that are brought forth by many. We welcome those and are grateful for them. We pray this night that we might be able to use wisdom in discerning the correct uses of funds, the correct uses of, of time and land management. We pray that we might make wise decisions for, for these groups and these individuals and also looking at the present, but also looking at the future. We're grateful for those willing to serve and those willing to help out. We're thankful that we could be, be part of the decision-making process and help us to be wise in doing so. Help us to have a good night this night and carry forth in a, in a proper manner as representatives of this city. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Boyd. Okay, please rise. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that was our opening ceremony. Thank you all. Uh, comments and reports, public comments. This is the opportunity the residents have to come up and speak their mind about whatever they feel like they'd like to. Anyone, anyone? Okay, whoever does come up to the microphone next, please turn it on. I just noticed it's red. Okay, so that would be a report from planning commission. Madam Chair.
Hello, I don't have much to report. We didn't have a meeting last week. We had a nice little break. But the one thing I did want to mention is the subdivision housing ordinance that we did. They have recommended through, I guess the approved legislation has changed a little, so they recommended a couple just changes to that. So we're going to initiate those and then you guys will see them in front of you. So, okay.
Questions for the chair? Thank you, Geneva.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, okay, any assignments or direction for the planning commission going forth? Any new assignments and direction? I don't know. They had, they had a week off. They must need more.
No.
No?
Not yet, but there will be, Geneva.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another consent item, consider approval of minutes dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
They will move, make that motion.
It's all second.
Okay, we have Boyd and Tim as motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Consider approval of bills dated May first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills.
A second down.
Katie and Boyd are motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, those all passed unanimously. Moving on to business items, I'm going to do someone a favor and move item B up for considering the fiscal year tentative budget because uh, Cody would like to be able to go home and do some stuff with his family.
Yeah, I gotta go rescue kids from babysitter. Um, so the budget we just went over, that's the tentative budget. We're required by state law to adopt it tonight. Um, so you can see we're well on our way to having our final budget. There's just a few little tweaks we need to make.
We need to make any, in a motion, do we need to make any consideration for the things that we talked about or if that will come out in the final?
I think your consensus is probably enough if you guys are okay with that. Um, because ultimately you'll get to choose what the final budget is and we can tweak stuff there too.
I, I'll make a motion to, to uh, for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tentative budget, budget as um, we were shown this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Katie are motion second. We'll recall this. Bob?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous. Thank you. So, carry on. Thank you. Thank you very much. Hope you make it in time. Okay, going back to A. Uh, we have several business licenses, so consider approval of business licenses for, we're going to start with the snack shack. Scott West, is Scott West here?
Are there, are there things on this one that we have questions on?
There were in the last meeting and they're supposed to be here. We were going to ask about their fire uh, inspections and their human.
We received nothing further? Okay. What do you want to do about that?
I'll make a motion that we table the business license for the snake, snake, the snack shack.
Snack shack.
Yeah, that one too.
Katie and Boyd are motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, Goat Bin LLC, Levi Bills. Come on up. Explain to us what a goat bin is and what you're going to do with them.
Good question. Um, Chris Brady, representing Goat Bin LLC, um, uh, co-founder of it. And so we sell used and new shipping containers. They're retired containers. Um, on the lot, we're just looking for uh, specifically what we call a staging yard where we put down four or five containers. A customer can come, pick their container and then we'll go and deliver it to them. So no product or um, it's not going to be used for storage at all. Uh, simply almost like a, like a show, a show floor.
Remind me where this lot is.
On the corner.
Right here.
November first. Next to the dental office.
Yeah, it's night's property on the corner.
When we're looking at containers, what are we looking at? I mean, what do we, like.
These sizes and how many?
Um, so they're generally twenty feet or forty feet long. Um, height is eight foot six to nine foot six and then uh, all of them are eight feet wide.
You're going to stack them?
Uh, no stacking.
And what are you going, I mean, what do you project to be? How many containers there at one time? When you say staging, this isn't the sales area. This is just the staging area?
Uh, correct, yep.
They've already been sold, you're staging here for pickup?
Yep, yep. A lot of our customers are northern Utah and uh, so we just bring them halfway. Our partner delivery carrier actually lives up this way and a lot of customers prefer Saturday delivery and the depots in Salt Lake are open Saturday. So uh, about four or five at a time.
Where are your sales being conducted?
Um, so our business office is in Draper, Utah. And uh, we just um, uh, do online sales and uh, advertise on KSL.
Property right now is just dirt and weed. Are you going to do anything to improve it, to change it?
Um, right now it's good as, as is. Um, for our purposes, um, we would keep the weeds down. Um, uh, just in agreement with the, with the owner of the property um, to maintain it, make sure it looks nice, but uh, it doesn't, it, it won't be uh, torn up in any way or used for.
A lot of the times these temporary licenses require more uh, site development, but it depends on what kind of.
They're not applying for a temporary license. This is a.
Yeah, originally we did apply for a temporary, uh, but when I came into the office, uh, because we planned to only be there like a year or two. Um, and it's over the ninety days, I had to apply for the full business license. Um, and it's over the ninety days, I had to apply for the full business license.
Like we need to restrict the amount of containers you have there. Is that going to be a problem with you?
Well, Boyd, I wanna kind of bring up a point here. In looking at our code of what is a permitted use, I don't, uh, what is a prohibited use in our C two zone? I don't think this fits as a, either a permitted use or a conditional use. And the, you know, in prohibited uses, we have, so, uh, bulk soil, rock, aggregate sales, storage or processing, storage units or storage facilities for lease or rent to the general public. And so I think that storage units or storage facilities for lease or rent to the general public makes that, this a prohibited use.
Except these aren't stained.
Stores, they're just containers that are gonna be turned.
They're gonna be stored somewhere else. I don't know.
Yeah, they're, they're in transit is what they are.
And I just, I don't feel like we have the, I don't, I, like, how can we put conditions on this when it's not a conditional use permit?
Going along with Katie, my concern here, uh, what I saw about this originally was an application for a temporary business license. And so if there's been conversation in between, uh, I'm not aware of that. Maybe I missed something. Never applied for temporary, so, so what are we applying for?
Full business license.
A full business license. That means that this, you say a year or two, that's ambiguous. I'm sorry, but we, I'd like to know what the end result of this is. Uh, I don't wanna see storage containers perpetually coming and going from that corner, uh, whether it's an allowed use, I, I think we need to have some dimension in terms of
that was one of my.
What this means in terms of longevity.
How was, how are you going to enter and exit that facility on a, in a safe manner? That's a crazy intersection. So what, how's that?
Yeah, the entrance, um, is, uh, right by Peterson's on that northwest corner, coming in from that, from there. So we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't enter in on, um, on, uh, what is that?
Two thousand west?
Thousand west. We wouldn't enter in from that, uh, from that, uh, spot. It would be on the northwest area, so.
And you have permission from Peterson's to use their portion of that?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
In writing?
Yeah.
Uh, not in writing.
It needs to be. I don't think a verbal is good enough on this. I think we better have a letter of consent.
Okay, we, we have a chair that has a. Yeah, we need you to speak into the mic so that you can be recorded.
I, nothing against you. I actually agree with Katie on this one. We have talked about it a little bit in planning commission that this temporary, even though temporary use does not fall in the C two zone. And at one point we were going to see a site plan maybe, and we've actually skipped over that and gone right to a business license. So I think we either need to go backwards and figure out if they really fit or, um, go from there. But we were all under the impression that this did not fit in the C two zone. So.
I ask a question.
Yeah.
The shed, the Montana Shed Company by Smith and Edwards is now selling or transitioning.
They are here tonight, yeah.
They're doing the same thing with the same type of containers.
In an M one zone, in an M one.
All right, that's what I didn't know.
Yeah, yep. Any other questions for me?
Spencer.
State your name so we make sure it's on the record.
Um, Spencer Knight. Um, part of that access where he's intending to use, I'm just here to support him, is on that Peterson property and a portion of that road over there is on my property. So I have an arrangement with Peterson that we can mutually go back and forth there. If you wanna get in writing, that's something that we can accomplish, but it, part of that road is already on our property. And I think you asked about longevity or how long this is gonna go for. This is not the final end use of the property. Eventually, there's gonna be another professional building there. Just not ready to do that right now with other projects I have going on. So that's why I told Chris that he's welcome to use it. I'm fine with it for a period of time until I'm ready to start building something um, like, like we already have, like the Knight Building, something like that will eventually be on the corner. So we looked at the conditional use. I know Katie, you have some concerns with that. I had some brief conversations with city attorney. Doesn't, I agree with you. I don't know that it doesn't necessarily approves it, but I don't know that it necessarily disallows it also. I think it's a little bit of a gray zone for my interpretation of it. I mean, there's just some containers that are gonna be sitting there. It's almost like a version of retail. They just happen to be potential storage containers. Or maybe, you know, it's the same thing that, that Soda Shop has used to build their place out in front of Kent's Market. So some company like that might find his product, buy it and put another business somewhere else using his things. So.
I think we understand that this is a, um, a transfer station. In other words, a client comes into Draper, orders a forty foot unit. They're from Idaho. They can come to here and have it picked up. Uh, those units aren't light. You've got to have some equipment.
Yeah, there's, there's a specialized equipment. It's called a tilt bed trailer. It actually can self-load. It's like a gooseneck forty foot trailer that's, uh, being hauled by a Dodge thirty-five hundred.
So how heavy are these when they're loaded up?
What's that?
How heavy are these when they're loaded up?
Uh, so when they're loaded, um, they can weigh up to forty thousand pounds, but an empty shipping container, forty foot, uh, weighs eight thousand eight.
That's what I meant, not when they're filled, but when you're picking the unit up, how heavy is it? Cause that little road back there by Peterson's is not engineered for heavy traffic.
Right, yeah, and.
Could you show the, like a, cause I'm looking at the street view right now of that area. And, yeah, it is, there, it's, I have my doubts that that could handle that kind of traffic.
Yeah, I think Geneva's got a point where we might just step back and run that through the planning commission with a site plan and make sure that this is, it's a critical corner, traffic, safety, a lot of things going on there. And then.
There you go.
You know what? I'm, I'm surprised Spencer that you want those containers there by your nice buildings, but that's just a. Keeping the weeds down, okay, I understand.
Well, and, and we're, and most, most businesses that we have, have sites and site plans. So this is, even temporary ones, even when the, um, statue guy comes in and gives us a site plan.
Lindsay, will you go to street view there?
Spencer, you own half of that, you say you own half of that, uh, roadway that goes down the east side of the.
The little yellow guy.
There you go. It's still gonna come out on to eighteen hundred.
Right on that corner.
Yeah, you're gonna be coming out onto there. You can't, one way or another, you gotta come on at eighteen fifty, you gotta go out on two thousand. Uh, that's the only way in and out of there. So. Yeah, the curb, the curb ends back where the turn lane begins for that right-hand turn.
How much volume do you think you're going to transact, take out, put in, take out, put in?
Um, it's about, uh, ten to fifteen containers a month.
Just for, how long will those containers sit there? I mean, you'll bring them in on a Wednesday and they sit there till Saturday? Or they could be two weeks or it could be a month, what?
Yeah, and the, and the plan is like if, uh, if there's a stipulation on the amount, like we'd have five there. Once one goes out, we'd arrange for another one to come in. So, yeah, typically it's less than a week where one container's there.
There'll always be at least four or five.
Yeah, yeah.
If this qualifies for a regular business license, then this could go on perpetually. There could be no end to this. I know you're saying you wanna develop it, but you might just like leasing it to empty containers.
Where would they be staged? Up, up front?
Um, on the plan that I submitted, they'd be back towards the road, not, not right against the road. Um.
You say the road, which, which road?
Uh, not against eighteen hundred, not against, um, or is it eighteen fifty, not against two thousand.
So that entrance is the, the, just the dirt entrance.
Yep, just right out onto eighteen fifty.
It's actually asphalt.
It is.
Now.
What's asphalt?
Right here it is.
That's what Spencer's saying he owns part of.
Well, the little Peterson, well, there's a building there now. He's put a new building right there.
Does the asphalt go further onto the property down?
No, it does not.
Quiet, it runs north and south right along there, past the fire hydrant. And so there's, there's a turn lane to get in to get out on a rough turn right on eighteen hundred north. And then there's on the north end of that retention pond is asphalt road where they can do an approach. Right on that northeast corner of where the retention pond is, the curve is cut, so they can use that as an access on and off of that property. Or they can alternatively be entered, go search the guns, fire hydrant.
But once again, these are all things that would be worked out in a conditional use in a site plan. And so I think that all the action in front of us right now is to vote on a business license. And I don't think we can do that without.
I don't think we have an accurate description of what the business is actually going to be there. Well, I'm not trying to give you a hard time about this, but it's just.
We'll entertain a motion of one sort or another.
Are you, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just, I'm, I think we're feeling this up and down the row here that there are too many unanswered questions. I'm not against you being able to do your business. I'm not against you being able to lease your property. Uh, I am a little, a little concerned about, uh, the longevity, the potential longevity of this. It's not gonna look good. I mean, it's just gonna be what it is. Um, and I just don't feel good about it at this point.
Is that in the form of a motion? Want a table?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Katie.
I make a motion that we deny the business license for Goat Bin without a site plan.
We have a motion.
Can I, can I just add to that?
You need to specify it.
And request that they resubmit to the planning commission?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For a site plan?
For a site plan approval.
Okay, is, is that in the form of a second with an amendment to the motion?
I will do that.
Denying or table?
I said deny.
Denied the business license?
Until.
To the deny the business license?
They're gonna go through the process.
With a request to go through, to get a site plan first and resubmit for it all.
Does it require a conditional use permit?
I think that's what we gotta work out. Is it, is, is it a, is that a permitted use?
The, the motion and the second.
Legal counsel.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, is that can go through planning and they can figure that out. They can figure out the zone, whether it even fits and so forth.
That's a proper way to do it, so it's, it's right all the way for everybody involved, so.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for denial. Will, Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay.
Let's, just, let's work the things out and see what we got, okay? Thank you.
Okay, next on the docket is Utah Structures LLC, Brandon Suarez with a big temporary on it. Are you scared yet?
Nope. So I'm Brandon from Utah Structures. Um, yeah, I don't know if I need a temporary license or need a permanent business application license, but we applied for the temporary, cause that's what we've been doing for the last three years.
Tell them why.
Yep. So, so I'm gonna kind of just tell my story. I came out here, moved here three years ago. Um, my dad had a, and by the way, thanks for the mayor and Boyd for coming in to the lot today and speaking with me. It was awesome. Um, so growing up, my dad had a shed location for the, from the Amish in the Mennonites is where we came from. And, uh, in Tennessee, it's where I grew up. And it's that, that location, that business was always my dream. I learned how to sell lawn furniture, learned how to do sales at a, that thirteen years old. Um, basically got tired of Tennessee, packed everything in the back of my truck and came out here. Ran out of gas out here is what I tell people. And, uh, this is where I'm, where I'm at, where I started. And, uh, simply just had a, called up Smith and Edwards one day. I just saw the property. Uh, used to do a lot of trucking back and forth three years prior to the three years that I've been there. And, uh, just randomly, I was like, you know what, I need to just go back into sales and I need to, um, call down to Smith and Edwards and just ask who the, who's that property is. I, I'm just a redneck, you know, so. Um, they hooked me up with Craig, had a conversation with Craig for, I don't know, fifteen minutes. And, uh, it was the next month or so, we sat down and talked. Um, he stated, or I, I, I proposed what we wanted to do with sheds being like, like no, we don't have to necessarily put a foundation on the property. Um, everything that's there can be moved off if he lets us go. And so he was like, you know what, uh, I get requests to put things on my property, businesses on my property every week, like five times a week. And he declines all of them because they don't fit. And so being that I can move everything off and I'm temporary, all the buildings on there are temporary, then he was okay with going to, on a month-to-month lease because he has future plans for the property. Um, so the first year we were there, we sold a hundred and fifty buildings. Next year it was two hundred and fifty. And it just, it grew to be what it is now. It's just a lot bigger than I thought it was going to be. Um, but we applied for the conditional use permit, got that approved by UDOT. We had, we did the improvements, me and Craig did. Um, there was an old, like, foundation there from the previous business that was there. That's where our office is. It's sitting on something solid. It's, it's anchored down. Um, but yeah, other than that, I don't, I don't know if I'm supposed to apply for a temporary or permanent or whatever, but that's, that's my story and I'm open to questions and wanna work with, um, work with Far West City to, to stay there. So as long as I can, as long as Craig allows me to, because I'm on there on a month-to-month lease, he can tell me.
What are you gonna do if he says you got thirty days and bye-bye, where are you gonna go?
Then I got thirty days. We're, we're, we have the agreement on paper that any improvements that I've made, which I've spent like fifty thousand dollars on improvements so far, um, any improvements that I made, especially with the gravel, so it's not like fire hazard or whatever, that I couldn't take all that back off of the lot if he would tell me I gotta go. Um, one thing that I'm, that I have a little security in is he said I could move to the north end of the store and we could be partners with Smith and Edwards, but I don't need partners. I'm not ready to do that right now.
By yourself.
So.
I don't know how many of you have been there, but.
Oh, it's, it's impressive.
I like businesses like this in, in Far West because it, it looks nice. You're, you're doing some improvements right now that are just.
Yep, almost, I mean, we're finished up tonight, so.
Temporary basis, I, I do, you know, I know we wish that you had a office with restrooms and all those things.
Yep.
But we understand the temporary side of this where you can't really put in a lot of permanent structure. But, uh, it, it looks nice. Uh, you're very professional about that business, uh, you, good reputation. And so I think, my feeling is this is the kind of businesses we want.
Well, the product looks good. Just on a drive-by, the product looks good.
Well, one, one thing that we have here that, uh, makes it interesting, it is and has been a temporary in our code. The definition of temporary is what, ninety somewhat days?
Yeah, I, I didn't even read that when I.
I think it needs to be a permanent. And I think, you know, he's been a permanent structure for three years.
And, and so if we change this from a temporary business to a business and we allow for some variance due to.
We'll use that word.
I'm just, we can use the word because this is something imposed on him. He, he can't pave, he can't run pipe.
Madam Chair.
It's something, it's something for us to consider. It, it's some, it's, although those things come in, it, it's one of those things where I think a lot of folks will agree, it's a business, it's revenue for the city. We do have code that we need to follow and all of that other kind of stuff. So how does the council feel about this?
I think there's a lot of things that are in our requirements that are there for a reason, like having sanitary facilities, having restrooms. There's other things that, um, you know, I think, I think we give temporary business licenses to be temporary for a reason, and that is the variance. But it, at the point that it exceeds that, it needs to become a permanent business.
My question is, how many temporary licenses can we grant consecutively? My question is, how many temporary licenses can we grant consecutively?
Can we come back in ninety days and get another one? And at, at more cost?
No, the definition, I just thought.
I think it's, it's ninety-five days, right, Lindsay?
Ten years.
On, on, on the, yeah, on the certificate that I've got in the past, it, it said for a year, so. I, I'd never read that. Yeah.
We have a new council that can read.
Yeah.
I scoured the temporary, I'm like, it's somewhere, I can't find it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so like for my office, I mean, I, I, I did exit doors front and back just to try to get, you know, as compliant as possible with all of that, but um, yeah, if there's something we can figure out or whatever, I'm, I'm open, I'm open to suggestions, open to anything, honestly.
I saw you also were doing equipment rental there. That didn't make it to your business license application?
I, yeah, that was my mistake. I, I, I just felt like you guys knew what I was doing, so I just quickly wrote down, we sell sheds. So I didn't go into the lengths of, uh, what was it, right? Yeah, the descriptions of goods offered for sale, that's what it was. Didn't go into lengths of what I do, cuz.
You wanna go over that real quick?
Because I did that last year, so I just figured.
You wanna explain to this new council?
Yeah, so.
What all you do do?
So this year, uh, we're bringing in tiny homes, they're RVIA certified, they had, they're on wheels. So I had to get, so that's why the name change was, I have, I have to go through the state, get a dealership license because they have titles, they're basically like an RV, I'm selling an RV with a title. Sell those, I sell containers, I sell sheds, pergolas, lawn furniture, and then the equipment rentals. So.
That's everything.
Yeah, I, I think.
Just because of the previous experience we had, he too needs a site plan, but.
I, I submitted one last year.
Oh, well, for this new, we didn't include this northern part, did it?
He's not on the northern part, that's an option.
Well, no, you're expanding your site.
No, it's the same.
Oh, this is just temporary, oh, okay.
No, I think it's the same as last year.
Is there a way to do the, continue the temporary, oh, have you approved a site plan?
No, we, we didn't. A site plan typically consists of an office, I, I've nev- I've never done an inspection on an office, bathrooms or anything like that. So that's part of a site plan would be all those amenities that would be signed off by the city and by, by the fiber department as, as a permanent, not, yeah, as a permanent site plan.
Here's the code.
Hold on, my comment to that though, seeing this one being a little different, you fit in the zone, you're already acting in the zone. So in my mind, could he use some of that temporary business license time to come into compliance with that and then go into a permanent?
As a porta potty can, I mean, what we're talking about is.
Where, where it's, it's, it's a permanent site plan now and it's. And, and that's my comment. I think if you're transitioning from temporary to permanent, there ought to be a site plan review with that consideration.
The problem he's got.
When we, when we were temporary, you understand porta potties and all that makes sense, but if you're, I realize you're in an awkward situation.
Yeah.
As far as you're renting the property, it's a temporary thing, but in terms of function, what you're doing on the site.
Correct.
For all practical purposes, it's permanent.
Correct.
So I think that really should require a more, more careful review of the site plan.
Yeah, I, I just know, like, for Craig, he doesn't, he doesn't want any buildings going in, any foundations or anything. He's very strict on all that. That's, that's why he hasn't sold that property, cuz he doesn't want someone to come in and compete with him. So that's why he's never gonna sell that.
But there are building codes that need to be.
Right.
Followed.
So even within the temporary business code, there are, there is the requirement for a site plan. And.
And he's done that.
No.
In previous.
In previous years I have.
It says that it has to comply with the building code, and Nate said he had never gone out there and inspected it, so there's no site plan that is approved, that meets our requirements.
Is there any way that you can go to Smith and Edwards and use their facilities in your agreement so you don't have to?
Quite a ways away.
It is, but still on the site, it's next door.
Could you bolt down the profile?
Then it's not portable.
That's a perma potty.
Ability to bring in sewer and water there?
Not without the landowner's consent.
Right, I mean, I, I, I'm.
Looking at the engineering and having our public works be inspected, that's the formal procedure.
Yeah.
We're kinda, we did a head run based on the temporary nature of this. It sounds like maybe we oughta confront it more directly like the normal.
Brandon, the other, the other element here is you've expanded the nature of your business. It's no longer just the sheds, it's the mini homes, it's the rental equipment. And so this is now and to your credit, grown beyond what you initially anticipated happening out there. Uh, all of this by the very nature of, of your success requires additional approvals, inspections.
Maybe you sit down with Craig.
I've honestly had this.
Plans to put something there in the future, can you be the advon going in advance?
I've had that conversation with him. I've had that conversation with him.
He doesn't know what he wants.
I, I've tried, like, I even two times I mentioned about buying the property and just, you know, full-on, blonde, you know, developing it and building a shop there so we can build sheds and all that. But, yeah, until he's willing.
There's gonna be a possibility if Craig's interested in, is in tapping into and providing another service for future builders. And using that service temporarily, as long as there's a service there.
Yeah.
Then, then I don't see a problem.
As far as infrastructure, you mean sewer and water?
Yep.
Could we just maybe get you and Craig in a development meeting?
That's a great idea.
I can tell you one thing, he doesn't like him.
Okay, I know Craig well, so it'll be fine. But I think that would help maybe solve some of this, and then is he allowed to just, within a temporary business license?
That's what it depends, can we, can we give him a temporary so that he can continue to do business?
For the last three years.
Well, knowing this is the last temporary, yeah.
Right. So that, you know, give me ninety-five days and us ninety-five days to get together with Craig and, and see what we can do. Yeah.
I can, I can deal with that.
That'll basically give you into the first week of August.
Yeah.
Thereabouts.
These are issues that can be overcome. We have other things that are issues that we're still trying to address, so it's.
And we really like this business.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to invite everyone to our customer appreciation day this Saturday here.
Shit?
Yeah.
We're actually giving a ticket giveaway, and we're nominating a veteran for a shed giveaway.
See, this is, yes, we want this, but we have to ha, it has to either, it has to fit within our.
I'm a hundred percent supportive to try to get everything, you know. I wa, I want it to be that way as much.
If you owned the land, this would be a slam dunk.
Right, yeah.
No problem.
Well, that's, that's gonna be part of this whole.
We'll clean it up for you.
Yeah.
Nice looking sign, though.
I think as, I think as presented, we do not have adequate information, adequate information or a, to make a my call on giving either a permanent or a temporary business or license, you know.
I would like to make.
Well, like a, a permanent temporary, not a temporary temporary.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we grant a temp, an extended temporary permit to Utah Structures LLC in the name of Brandon Suarez, so that he can negotiate and make plans through the planning commission and through Craig. And congeal your needs.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Bob and Boyd, B and B, as motion and second. I'm gonna roll call this. Bob?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Boyd?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Okay, you have a ninety-five day.
Perfect.
You're back to ninety-five days, so. And thank, and thank you for what you do.
This is the type of business we want here. This is, this is.
Let's twist Craig's arm so we can get some.
Well, I, I really appreciate that and hope to see you all be there Saturday. Dollar hot dogs and hamburgers and stuff, so.
Will you get with Lindsay tomorrow and then Craig and get a, get on our next development meeting?
When is that?
When tomorrow, we can get right here.
I, I can't do anything this week, I thought I could make it to the meeting.
Friday mornings.
Two weeks, so it's far.
Two weeks. Okay. So seventeen?
Probably, yeah, seventeen is a good thing.
You're the only one with a calendar in your hand.
So I guess my question is, what if, what if Craig says, no, I don't want any of that?
And let us know and we'll, we'll talk to him.
Remember when we told we, we didn't have any directions for the planning commission, and then we just said, here's all of the direction?
Okay, well, those were fun.
Yeah.
Okay, next item, consider approval of a donation for the Weber Junior Livestock Program.
I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the same amount of last year as of two thousand dollars based on discussion in the budget meeting to, to support this program.
Do we have to wait until that appears on the budget before we dispense the funds?
Not necessarily, cuz we're just intended that it be on the final, so.
And I wanna.
Yes, before we disburse funds, yes, but.
It's gotta show up as a budget item.
That's not gonna be until, I mean, they, they have this program in August, so.
Okay, so our final has to happen in June.
Yeah.
A motion by Boyd, and Katie has a comment.
Can I just, can I do my soapbox?
You can soapbox.
I think these are all very valid and wonderful causes, and I have a really hard time with these though, because what is a good cause and what's not a good cause? And where does the bottom, where do we hit the bottom at? And so as much as I want to support this, I, I just, for that reason, can't.
You're in the boat. If I say yes to you, I have to say yes to everyone else.
Yes.
Not necessarily. I think we look at how it affects our opponent.
Okay, I still have a motion.
I will second the motion.
Bob, seconded the motion. We'll roll call vote this. Tim?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Boyd?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And Bob? Okay, it is a majority.
Can I, can I just make a quick comment, real quick, legal? Being in similar meetings with similar comments about where money should and shouldn't be spent um, and being tasked with the assignment of looking into whether public bodies should or shouldn't spend money in a specific location. This goes back to your duties as a legislative body, and as a legislative body, you have discretion. That's your job as an elected official to decide what qualifies as a valid expenditure of money. And so I understand Katie's point, right? There may or may not be a valid use of money. It is your discretion as the legislative body for the city to make that decision. And so you guys are within your right, just to make sure you're all clear, you're within your right to make that call and decide whether it's a good use of money or not because you're the legislative body.
Thank you, Liam. One thing I've learned over all these years is all it takes is three yes votes and we can do almost anything we want to.
Almost.
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 Okay, thank you. The next thing, uh, let's see, where am I on mic? Consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, amending the noise ordinance.
Did you skip the?
Did I skip one? Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, I had too many scribbles on here. Back up to D, approval of the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project and award bid. Dave, would you like to come up and, uh, my apologies. You're all squished together here on my.
We had a bid opening three weeks ago for our twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five part of our road projects. It's not the whole project, but this is, this is the paving projects. We had nine bidders. Very close this year. Very close.
I like to see that it is less than the engineer's estimate. Doesn't happen.
It don't, no, it, for us, it always is, cuz we want them, we want them high so we can project our futures, but.
Um, I had a question for you. What's the phasing and timeline on these?
Right now, we had a, we had a pre-construction meeting Wednesday. They do wanna get started early, so Granite, we're talking about Granite now, is, we wanna award the bid to Granite. They wanna start the last week of May to the first week of June. So the caveat there is, is this money's not available till July first. But if they can keep the invoices for the project completions till after July first, we, we've done it in the past, we have not gotten in trouble yet, so I kind of would like to keep doing that. What's their timeframe? Completion, must they start? They have the whole year, but right now we, our weather constraints, well, it's usually fifteenth of September. But they can push it, so we, we are finishing projects, so Cody just showed you, we're setting on a hundred and ten thousand. That's pre-spent now because we got delayed for the gas company last year. So ninety-eight thousand's already pre-spent to finish this year through July.
And what are the, what are the impacts? Are we gonna see like road closures and?
We are, all this is in subdivisions, so Mia Meadows and front of the mayor's house in Bermuda. And it's not because he's the mayor. It's the other side there, right? So there'll be minimal impact as far as traffic flow. Residents, yes, but they, and that's one of the reasons, like, last year we, we, we changed, we went to the low bid. It was a little tough. This year, we, we ate nineteen thousand, nineteen hundred dollars to give it to Granite. Bigger company comes in and, and they got their ducks in a row. They, they have their subs in a row. So they can come in and it's like, no, this is the week we're doing it, we're gonna do it. So that's, it'd be a little nicer that way for the residents.
There are also some other factors, like what they're listing is like the amounts for certain materials and things that they're doing that could.
It could, so.
Raise their heads during any change orders, which may or may not happen.
This, this bottom number we look at, the two ninety-seven, one twenty-four, that can change on tonnage, on asphalt tonnage. So little things like that.
That would be true with any of these contractors.
That's correct, that's correct. Rarely does it. Sometimes we're a little bit under, sometimes we're a bit little over, but it's it's within one percent.
Can, um, we work together just to get some, I mean, get the word out to the residents when they'll be impacted?
Fact is, there's a forty-eight hour notice, no longer. Fact, he just sent me that today, I have not read it. That will be posted on our website and stuff like that.
Okay, great.
And along with Katie, we're not gonna landlock anybody by starting one project and another one near it and making it very, very difficult for ingress and egress.
No, for right now, we're, there's not even a traffic study to do or flow pattern because there's enough room, they, they can do the whole things cuz of access.
So we don't have to do like a detour plan or?
But they're, they're planning on a two-day project.
Two day?
Two days, so that's one of the.
I, I experienced it last year with the one half of the road, and it was like bang, bang, and it was done.
Except for the manholes.
Well, manhole.
Manholes. So hopefully this year we won't have that issue yet.
Is this just an overlay or are they gonna mill it?
It's a mill and an overlay. Yep. Both of them, well, twenty-seven hundred west where the sewer line, new sewer line went down four years ago now, I believe. Something like that.
Yeah.
We're, we're finally done settling, we're gonna, we're gonna patch it.
Are we gonna keep the mill?
Yes, we keep the mill, we're gonna put it out on the parking lot of Smith Park, just cuz it's easy to put there. Far as tonnage, maybe two hundred ton, not a heck of a lot. But we'll keep it there and we'll put it back on our trails and roadside edging. Great.
Recycling it in our own way.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-four street maintenance project and award the bid to Granite Construction.
I will second the motion.
Hey, Katie and Bob, our motion and second for approval of this. Bob?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Boyd?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Off and running. Thank you. Okay, now we can do the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, amending the noise ordinance. Okay, this is partially my fault. Um, but I talked with Liam and he said this is something we can do. Recently, there was a very loud house party that was going all day and then actually into the evening. I got several calls about it. The sheriff's department were called at least twice on this location.
Yet you persisted.
And yes.
How was the party?
It, it was loud. I, I actually recorded it and when they saw. It, it was loud. I, I actually recorded it, and when they saw me sitting in my truck, they actually hopped the fence and surrounded my truck, so made me a little nervous, but not that nervous. But it was strange, but basically, we want to be able to, because according to our code, e- even if they're noisy, correct me if I'm wrong, Liam, even if they're creating a tremendous amount of noise, even during the daytime, they can be cited. You wanna help explain? You, you, come or go, either way?
Correct. Um, previously, an infraction was all we could cite people with. Um, we wanted to add a little bit more teeth to it, and as the code still reads now, Mayor is correct, anytime during the day, if the noise is excessive, we can still cite them.
What's our definition of excessive? In other words, where's the?
It's in the ordinance here. We have to pull it up.
I mean, do we have to do a decibel reading or something, or what is it?
No, it's a, uh, we only limit it by feet in the evening between the hours of.
Ten and six.
Ten and six. A- any noise which is heard, I think it's forty feet.
Yes.
Further than the premises constitutes, um, nu- a nuisance.
And that's just for, under radiographs, phonographs, and mutusical instruments. There's other ones that have different criteria.
But there's also, uh, if you look in the generally, I personally think we're somewhat covered under generally.
Right, we are. Um, so we have, yeah, and generally, it's the things that make the noise, um, there's some hour requirements.
Does that mean that somebody else off-site is able to hear it? Or does it have to be?
Hours.
An extreme that it's, that it's not just I can hear it, it's disturbing. I don't know exactly how we monitor what excessive noise is.
Lots of these refer to unreasonably or unnecessarily. So we don't define it by decibels, which some cities do. They have a very strict decibel reading in it.
Because this can become very subjective.
Absolutely, so.
That's why you take it to court.
Right. But right now, if it's, if we receive enough complaints, if we determine that it is unreasonable by our standards of being unreasonable, um, it, it allows that flexibility. It does. So there isn't a decimal number in there intentionally.
Right.
But if the, that's something you guys could discuss if you would like to see a decimal reading.
No, I just want to know exactly how a touchy neighbor or a more tolerant neighbor responds to the same amount of noise. Uh, some things don't bother everybody. Some people are bothered by anything.
If they get just one complaint, I mean, what do we have a leg to stand on? But if we get two or three, I think we have a definite leg to stand on.
It bolsters our position, yeah, the more we have. Right.
If it's just one single complaint, then.
You might have two neighbors that don't like what either one of them is doing, and they're just gonna complain.
I have a question about what's generating the noise. Does it have to be audiology, pardon me, records or tapes or microphones or things of that nature? It can just be any noise.
Yeah, there's a number of things in the ordinance, yeah. Horns, animals, construction activities, all of that.
Loud people. I just want to make sure it was all encompassed.
Yep, it's very broad.
Presently, schools, churches, parks, and courts as well are accounted for in there.
I hear Walquist all the time, and I don't live next to him.
Soccer morning sucker.
Okay, so what Liam has done for us here is he has added criminal penalty can be a, a classy misdemeanor.
Right. Instead of just an infraction of the code, which is all we had, now we can cite them civilly and criminally with the classy misdemeanor. Civil penalty won't exceed that of a classy misdemeanor, which is $750 right now. Um, each separate of day that this occurs is gonna be a separate offense, so if they ignore us on the first day, we could cite them again the next day and the next day and the next day, $750.
How do we make that determination? Is it like, you know, the sheriffs get called out there or, you know?
So often, it'll, there's two options. Code enforcement, right? If Iris comes out and says, okay, this is a violation of city code, then she can cite them, uh, with a, a civil penalty. If we, if we think that's not gonna work or they're gonna ignore, I mean, $700, fifty, $750 is a lot to some people, but not to another. So if we think that's not gonna work, sheriff's office can get called, go out, assess the situation, issue a citation if they think it's appropriate, and we can lean on that. That, I mean, oftentimes, the criminal penalty weighs a lot more on people's minds than we're gonna fine you $750 bucks, so.
How necessary, in the daily scope of activities in the city, is this amendment?
Well, I, I don't know how often we get nuisance noise complaints. This last one time we did, though, it would have been beneficial to have this.
I can show it to you.
There's probably, there's probably, there's more than one, I think. There's, there's different.
So the way I'm hearing this is, this is an additional tool. We will still have the ordinances to keep it at a lower level, and then if it needs to escalate, it gives us the opportunity and the possibility to escalate into.
Right, which we didn't have before.
Would they get some kind of a warning, say, if you don't quiet this down right now?
That's up to the responding code enforcement officer or the sheriff's office.
You have a code.
Yes, we do.
Well, I don't, I think.
No, we do. We have Iris Cannon from Weber County.
Is she gonna come out at one o'clock in the morning?
That's my question, uh, for a sustained kind of a noise thing, like you've got a business that's creating noise, the code enforcement officer's a great idea. For something like this, a one-time party.
In the middle of the night?
A response you're gonna get from our code enforcement officer.
No, that, that's when we would call the sheriffs and have called the sheriffs. I have an incident where they were called twice in one day.
So then the, the sheriff can issue the, the civil.
Citation.
The citation.
Yeah, they can issue a classy misdemeanor if they want, so.
The judge can decide.
Yeah, and engage and the judge can work that out.
So if they get the citation, whether it's criminal or civil, they're still gonna come to the court. Is that right?
Not for the civil, and the civil, we can do that on our own and issue a civil citation to them. Iris could issue a, a, a citation certificate, not a certificate, whatever she calls it, and then they'll be assessed at $750. She could do that.
Oh, but we, we're giving them the opportunity to have the criminal penalty, so then they can do it.
Would we give a, a requirement to do two, three civil before we go to criminal? Or just an option just to go straight there?
Yeah, I think it's case by case.
I motion that we consider, that we approve the 2020, pardon me, the ordinance number 2024-08, amending the noise ordinance, um, because it's beneficial to the, the population of Far West.
Okay, I have a motion by Bob.
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Roll call, Bob?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, that has been approved. Thank you so much. Now, the most fun that we ever have is Mayor Council follow-up, report on assignments. Who should I pick on first? Bob, you wanna start?
I'll keep it simple. Uh, CERT training for Weber was conducted. There will be another mass training opportunity in the fall, so if anybody wants to become a CERT qualified and certified person, uh, they need to contact the county. Um, I met with Dave, and we've already talked about the roads plans, and I think it is sound, uh, based on what I was given and what you know, so I think we're good there. There was a trails meeting today. I was not able to participate at two o'clock, because I was driving.
That was actually not today.
Okay.
I think maybe it didn't get canceled properly on your calendar.
Okay.
But we're good.
All right, then we're good. I was just gonna say, I was gonna follow up later. Yep. Uh, sewer long-range planning for Weber County, um, we have a meeting coming up next week, and if anybody had any concerns or issues, just let me know and I'll take them to the Long Range Planning Committee. Um, I did have one request. It was, came from a, an interesting source regarding parks, not my, my forte, um, but while I was standing, waiting for the kids to board a bus today, a young lady came up to me and said, can we do anything about the puddling of the water at Far West Park in the horse arena area? And here's an idea, and then maybe I'm, I'm not a veterinarian, I don't, it's gonna work. Could we take some of the millage?
Nope.
Not for horses.
It's gotta be sand.
No, I'm saying, put it as an underlaid to create a, an angle, and then put the.
Problem is, is when they, when they groom that, it pulls up the dirt.
Okay. I'm just, and I, I asked this young lady to go think about what she could do with her horse.
It's dangerous for the horses.
To bring the water out.
In that type of situation.
It's just the downside of a wet spring, and you just have to.
Well, she asked if we could vacuum it out, pump it out, because she really wants to use it.
You wanna pay for it?
No. I, I understand. I'm, she's just trying to be creative.
Got a creative way?
Yeah.
Lieutenant, I was wondering, okay, all right.
We're good. And then I had one, it's not me, it's not us, it's a public service announcement. Weber County is gonna need a lot of bus drivers this year, because there are a lot of retirements, and there's three brand-new schools, so if anybody knows, anybody that's willing to get trained, certified and licensed to drive a bus as either primary, an alternate, or as a, a sped aid, come to me and I will guide them.
God bless you, Bob.
There you go.
You drive them.
Thank you.
I do. And I drive all. I drive the sped, I drive regular. That's why this girl came to me at Walquist today.
But, good for her for, like, bestie question.
I, I patted her on the back and said, thank you, so.
Great.
That's the end.
That's it? Thank you, Bob. Okay, Dave?
Uh, at this point, I'm not sure how much, I'm gonna leave you to deal with Woodsonia. All right, I'll let you report on that one.
Okay.
All right. Uh, there was a moderate income housing seminar, which I was not able to participate in, but I will go home and look at the link that you sent me and go through what they did. Uh, I haven't had a chance to do that yet. That just came to me today. It did. Um, I've been talking with Roberta in the senior center. They have some activities coming up. Uh, they're not immediate, um, but there might be some things that, uh, they will need our help with, um, down the road a little bit in terms of some setup. They've got one they wanna do over at Mountain View Park, and we might need to help them with some of the physical setup for that. Uh, we have a, um, housing committee meeting next Tuesday on the seventh at three o'clock in the afternoon, um, and, uh, we're working on some things, uh, with regard to amending the C3 zone. Uh, Geneva, after we have that meeting, that will come to you and the planning commission, uh, for some, some design work, and then it can come back to the city council. All right, that's probably the biggest thing on the agenda right now, is that C3. And I can't say much else about that right now until we get it through the process. So I've got a lot of vague information. That's.
Thank you for all that vagary. You're welcome. Boyd, what kind of vagary do you have for us today?
I'll try to be a little more vague.
A little more specific.
Um, I, I mentioned earlier that the, uh, animal shelter is, um, above maximum capacity, and so just be aware of that. I know that, that they were called in my area today, and it's just, it's really difficult for them to take in more animals and to do different things, so just, uh, if we're just aware of it, I guess, is more than anything. Um, my fire district board meeting is not for another week, and so I don't, don't have anything there, but we did have a retirement thing, uh, Lieutenant Orms there, some of the deputies, but it was for Chuck Stokes and Rock Toon, who have been there. Chuck's been there thirty-five years, Rock's been there twenty-two years, um, good, solid, uh, people on the, on the fire district. It's sad to see him go, but they have left a good legacy and, um, good people, and they've trained good people to take their place, so I think that's a, that's a thing. I can always tell when the mayor's gone, because I get a few more phone calls, um, or at least when you're not available. So I got, I got a call this week, first from Nate. Thank you for a heads up, but we had a little situation with one of the businesses, kind of what we're dealing with tonight, that are trying to make some improvements without doing it properly. And, uh, I got a call a, a little bit later from, you know, one of the owners, and they said, look, and apparently he'd calmed down by then, but we, he, we talked it through and, and we just, uh, it was one of those situations where he just needed to understand that there is a process, and there's a reason for the process, just like what we talked about tonight, and so, um, you know, I, I think we're doing the right things, and I think hopefully he's been in and trying to make that right, so. He, he had crews there that they had to shut down, and, uh, that probably made him a little angry, but they're gonna have to have some, uh, engineering done to do it the correct way. Also, uh, received an email, a couple emails from different citizens on, basically what I brought up last time is cleanup of the city and new subdivisions that are getting junky with trailers in the, in the street, um, just things. People like to have a nice place to live, and they don't wanna dodge trailers when they fall under their subdivision. I know we have a, a street parking ordinance from April to October, or October to April, but nothing after that, so I don't know.
Except for forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can't, that's true.
It can't be left there.
I, I.
So.
The unfortunate thing is with the forty-eight hour thing, and I think, uh, the lieutenant will support this, I know if a trailer has several green stripes painted on it.
Sure.
You mark it, see if it moves. It moves.
So they just move it a little bit. Anyway, so there are those things going on, so I just think we need to help the public be aware, and again, I, I hope that we can post and put out there that, hey, this is spring and it's, it's okay to do a little spring cleaning and, and get things and help around. Uh, they have a, 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 my hometown initiative going on in Ogden City for the last few years, and they go in, and the community goes in and helps, helps the, the other people in the community that might not be capable to, to help clean up. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, can be adapted or adopted here, um, a little bit, that we help our neighbors, just, just keep things. All this, all these ordinances that we're approving, the noise ordinances, anything like that, if we were just good neighbors, um.
Talking to each other.
I remember one of the, probably the one of the most impactful things for me was when, uh, you would take a group of scouts, Cub Scouts, to, to see Mayor Papa George, and he, they would, somebody would ask, what can we do as citizens to be good citizens? And he would always say, be a good neighbor. And so I just, that's my soapbox for the night, but thank you.
Thanks, Boyd.
Hey, and not vague.
It's pretty, pretty specific.
Hey, Katie, your turn.
Oh, Mayor and I were able to go to the Utah League of Cities and Towns Midyear Conference in St. George, and there was some, um, there was some really good discussion and some really good classes that I went to. I went to a public comment class, and they kind of went through, like, what constitutes a forum and what, what, can you cut somebody off that gets up to the mic and starts talking about something completely unrelated, and it was a good refresher and, um, uh, to, to be reminded about, and, because sometimes I think we get in those situations where, like, well, what is within our right to do? So, did that one, and then also went to a class on that the, um, transportation, um, agencies in Utah did about safe streets, and they talked about a funding program that is being administered through the, um, FHWA, so Federal Highways, to, um, award funding to local municipalities for planning for safe streets, which could be crossings, it could be road diets, it could be trail, separated trail or pedestrian facilities, and then also funding then ultimately for implementation of those, so I'll, I will send you that information and put you in touch with them, because it looks, it seems like some of the projects that we do have in the works may be really good recipients of this funding mechanism. And then, so that's League of Cities and Towns Conference, and then, um, Parks Committee, we had a meeting, yes, or Monday, and, um, there's, we've kind of content, we've kind of restarted talks with the Utah Youth Soccer Association. Um, they've indicated that they would like to continue to explore a joint development of the newly named Meadow Park. a joint development of the newly named Meadow Park, no longer Library Park, Library Property, The Meadows Park, which I really like.
What's in between Mia Meadows and Far West Meadows?
Perfect. Meadows Park.
So, uh, we met with our engineer and talked about, you know, kind of how we would kind of ph- phase this and approach this, and so we've got some momentum there. The Utah Youth Soccer Group will be coming to meet with our Parks Committee at our next meeting to kind of restart those discussions, so good to see some momentum there. And then you can see that we, we paid a very big bill to Garrett and put the deposit down on the park, um, from the Mountain View Park. And Lindsay, I dropped in a file to our Dropbox that has the color options. Um, we're just trying to determine what colors to do for the playground, and it seems to be that, um.
We have a day, a one-day consensus?
Yep, and then in today. Yep. And then.
Nothing that's out there right now has been, is new, right?
And then that one. So we gave, so we, we have to do one with blue, because there's one piece of playground that is blue. So we've given people the option of Mother Earth, Island Oasis, nautical or patriotic. Front runners seem to be Island Oasises, no, 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 just kidding, Mother Earth and Ocean.
Which one would be the biggest retention of heat during the summer? And which one will reflect more light and heat?
The way they make them anymore, I think they're.
Also, we have three giant shade structures that are going over this, so.
And the lighter, the cooler, of course, right?
Yeah.
And I think those are both really good options, so. I personally wanted electric, but alas, no blue.
Katie, uh, that budgetary amount then is for the completed project, is that correct?
It's the deposit.
The ninety-three thousand is the deposit, what's the final number?
Three hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand, and we've res, our.
Going to the park business.
Yeah, they're not cheap, and our, but. But our grant from Ramp is a hundred and seventy-five thousand of it. We still have another grant in process and in review from the National Park Service for the other lion's share of the portion of it, so.
I wasn't sure about that number, I kinda, what did we get for ninety-three? Start. Okay.
So.
So what color did you pick?
Well, I think, I think, I'll go count the numbers. We put it, we put a poll out in the Mountain View Neighborhood Facebook group and Mother Earth and Ocean were the two favorite.
Very similar.
So, that's all I have.
We have to decide on that yet?
The sooner, well, they're going to order it and that they've actually, uh, taken care of a lot of the backlog of things, so we can, what is it, six to eight weeks?
Yeah, I think.
So. The sooner we pick a color, the sooner they'll order it.
Well, that's why I asked, do we need to make a decision or, uh, where does that?
I'm comfortable with Mother Earth, let's go.
Yeah, so I'll, I'm gonna look at, kinda count some numbers. Count the numbers and we'll go from there.
Okay.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make, close it by the end of the week.
Perfect. We're a legislative body, we can make those decisions.
Electric, let's do it.
It's override, you know?
Okay, if there's three yes votes for electric, guess what? We can do almost anything.
Cool.
Yeah.
Alright, fine.
Okay, continue, Katie.
I'm done, I'm done.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
You had more words over there.
Are you ready for this?
Okay, Tim.
I have nothing to report.
We gotta do something about that.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. Okay, um, because I have not, I have not attended a meeting for a month, be patient. And I haven't been doing nothing. Don't groan, it's all good stuff. So with WACOG, the Transportation Subcommittee, uh, letters of intent are due Monday at five PM for what, and Friday morning, we're going to discuss which projects we're going to, uh, ask for funding. I believe this would be for future year, like twenty-nine or thirty, you know, so we got some of our projects funded for last year, but of course, we like to at least ask for some, so we're gonna discuss that in the morning. Uh, of which ones, I think we can basically resubmit, but, well, the letters of intent are easy, but even as we do the rest of it, we should be able to just expand or update what we've already, um, put in on the ones we didn't get. Okay, Trails Foundation of Northern Utah, um, there was a, some of this is in the past because they happened. There was a free trail mixer at the Monarch on the twenty-fifth, just last Thursday. They shared some of the trails, the projects, uh, some events that are coming up and they handed out awards. One thing that's kind of exciting is, uh, Twenty-seventh Street in Ogden has, uh, basically a trailhead, but it's not a trailhead, it's an official trailhead. Well, the owners of the property donated a bunch of property to the Trails Foundation and they're going to create a really nice, uh, trailhead there at Twenty-seventh Street, so. That's the next big project for, for those folks and they're very excited about it. Um, just the other night, there was a ritual film festival at the Egyptian. Uh, it was basically mountain biking. If you've ever been to a Warren Miller ski movie, everybody loves those that ski, this was like that for mountain bikes, so. I wish I could've gone, but I was unable to attend. Um, but they are going to have a, uh, an Ogden Mountain Film Festival, so what this is gonna be, this is on November seventh, also at the Egyptian, but what it's gonna do is it's going to have local films by local people doing cool stuff in our area, so they're gonna consolidate a bunch of cool films of just, you know, local folks. So if you wanna be in the movies, get your mountain bikes out. Film yourself.
Wanna be in the hospital, get your mountain bike out.
No, I mean, that's one way to do it. They, they'll have a blooper reel, I'm sure. And, um.
The fire district has a, a little thing that if you get your face on TV or the big screen in this matter, you buy ice cream for everybody, I just, I'm just saying, so.
Oh, that'd be cool. Okay, um, June first, so that's coming up, is National Trails Day that, uh, Trails Foundation is gonna be putting on. They'll have basically a whole bunch of stuff at Farmer's Market. They're in Ogden, near the amphitheater, they're gonna be bringing out the, uh, I think I mentioned last year, they have this peak challenge where people go and hike to each of the major peaks within Weber County. I'm planning on doing it so I can get my, um, Peak Challenge Award. So all you gotta do is hike them and take a picture of yourself.
That's all you have to do.
You don't have to do them all in one day, do you?
Some have.
I know.
Extra credit.
They start at Willard and then you just start.
Down to.
That's, that, that's exactly what they do. And last year, there was one dog that did them all, so if you can outdo a dog, go for it. They actually have created a new membership in Trails Foundation for dogs. So they can be Trails Foundation members, so, because, you know, dogs like to hike, right? Okay, um, my portion of the League of Cities in Town mid-year conference, I'm gonna expand a little bit here. We had an, I, I found it to be a very interesting keynote speaker. Uh, Nicole Picas Pace, does everybody remember Nicole Picas Pace? She was the skeleton cruiser from down in, uh, Provo, I believe. She, I think she wound up, uh, eventually, I think she won gold the very last time she did it, because it was a very exciting moment for her. But it was, she'd gone through a bunch of adversity and all that, and basically her whole thing was you, where you look is where you go. And it's, it's, it is so true, because like, when you're on skeleton, if you know what skeleton is, you're laying down on it with face first with your chin this far above the eyes, okay? But I guess she went through a turn and she looked up at the little peak, you know? That's where she went and crashed and, you know, she was injured and the, and the whole work, so. Um, and it's very true, because I, I ride a bike and it's very true, if you, you gotta look, if you look, that's where your body follows. So I found, and, and that's true in a lot of the things that we do, so. I've, I found it somewhat inspirational, for what it's worth. Um, I went to a couple of things like Katie did, we tried to divide and conquer as much as possible. Uh, we wound up in one both at the same time and I decided I had to get up and leave, just not because Katie was in there, but because Katie was in there. I wanted us, you know why, because I wanted us to share and bring back more information for everybody. So I went to one where there's the role of special events, uh, that was kind of interesting. There's other cities that, uh, they must go crazy with events, they actually hire a full-time person that all they do is plan events. All they do is plan events, big ones, but those are big cities that have like eighty thousand people and more money than they need, obviously. I went to one that. What's that?
Where they wanna generate more revenue.
Sure, yeah. I mean, they have movie in the park like Weekly, for instance. Um, yeah, another one I went to was handling conflict. I thought it was gonna be on how to handle conflict, like with residents and stuff like that. You know, be educated on stuff like this, but it wound up being a handling conflict like within the council. We don't have that problem, so it really wasn't of value to me, because we don't have any conflict here, do we? No one's going to admit. Uh, there was legislative advocacy, basically, uh, they did a summary of all the things that the League of Cities in Towns have done for us. Um, you know, some say they don't do enough for us, some say they do quite a bit for us, but actually they did fight a lot of battles for us when it came to the legislature. Uh, I attended the Rapid Growth Caucus, that, that most of everything in that conversation was dealing with housing and infrastructure. And then I went to something about, uh, recent housing and infrastructure bills and what comes next, and there were so many questions, they were unable to get to them all, because of all of the tools that are there. There's the, the CRAs, the IFDs and the PIDs, and these are all things that we're gonna have to get acquainted with, with the things that are coming up for us, you know? PIDs are Public Infrastructure Districts, IFDs are Infrastructure Financial Districts, and of course CRAs, which we have a CDRA as our, um, what does that stand for? Unity Redevelopment Agency or something like that. And, uh, basically I've kinda pointed Liam towards, we, we have a current CDRA as it's known. Uh, we're going to go through the, uh, what we need to, through just a resolution to basically rename it a CRA so with, that it's in the modern terms. We're taking the D out. That's basically, there's more to it than that, but that's kind of what it is. Functionally, it does the same, and, uh, we need to meet as a board, and if you don't already know this, the board as defined right now in our CDRA is the city council. Ask, be noted separately, we need at different times and all that other kind of stuff. And we need to meet as a board, because we have some other fun stuff coming up. Uh.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
We, can we get another training, Liam?
Oh, CRA?
Uh-huh.
Oh, man.
Let me get trained on CRAs first and then I'll train you on CRAs, how's that?
Okay.
Okay, good.
So, one of, one of the things we're doing with, uh, so, one of the things that we've been recommended to do is we are, need to hire for certain project areas that we could have in the city, a CRE, uh, legal advisor. Okay, that legal advisor, and we've got a couple of recommendations. I got one, I asked Liam, who asked his boss, uh, Chris Crockett, who then recommended, uh, Doug Larson. Doug Larson actually helped write the whole CRA, or he was very in tune with all the CRA stuff of Weber County, the tax increment, all of the stuff that goes on with that. So, and I've had a conversation with him. Um, some other ones that have been, uh, at least floated my way, there's a Randy Larson. They're with, uh, a group that, they're very, that, they're the ones that, if you ask help from the league, that's who the league recommends you go with. So what I'd like to do is basically take some of the council and perhaps look at some of these folks, uh, perhaps Dave and Boyd to start with, because, you know, your role as, you know, community development, economic development, and you as uh, Assistant Mayor, we can look over some of these and then we can talk as a board about which direction we wanna go, if that's alright with you folks.
Accepted.
Okay. So, um, that's what's going on with all of that right now. I've been looking all over the place. We also have an RFP put in for, uh, a purchasing agent, because if we purchase some property, we may need to purchase some property in order to implement the roads for a certain project area, so that we, you know, that is, could be paid for from WACOG funding. So we have that WACOG funding, it can go towards purchasing property. So there's a whole lot of, uh, things up in the air, learning a lot about all these acronyms. So we put that out, it's gonna close on May ninth, so that we have a pool. This was a recommendation from Pleasant View, who we're working with on some things, especially the road over, uh, north of twenty-seven hundred. That, basically we took their document that they got, that their RFP for purchasing the agent, and we put in all the far west words to put that together and, uh, yeah, we have, it's posted with, uh, Jones and Associates as well, it's on our website, so hopefully we can, uh, get those things going. So we're gonna get an advisor, legal consultation on it, those specific things and purchasing agents. These are all the things that we need, and I talked with Cody about this, our current, because these things, of course, are gonna cost us some, that's why it is advantageous to have some funds in what he called the CDA. Those funds can go towards doing this, so even without a project area, we have some funds to be able to do these things. Yes?
The, uh, legal advisor and the purchasing agent are on a as-needed basis, in other words, per project?
Yes, so like, for instance, if we get a pool of purchasing agents and perhaps you know a little bit about these kinds of things, okay, they can be utilized for, let's say we have other purchases we need to do for other road projects or other projects in general. They do the, uh, the groundwork, they know how to do all the.
That's their profession, we just hire them for a particular purchase.
And the, the recommendation is that you get a, of course, a commercial purchasing agent, not just a home realtor.
Right.
Type of person, because.
Okay, thank you.
And so I, I may even tug on you a little bit, you might know a person or two for us to consider. Okay, thank you. Uh, so that's on that. Housing Committee, we, uh, kinda already talked about that with David. Park Committee, Katie already took care of that. It's great. Code Enforcement, Iris is working out what we've sent her. She's doing an awesome job, she's gonna reach out to those that, uh, have been the complainers, that'll help me a little bit, and, um, let's see, my other assignment, Bonavista Water. We are currently running on the newly upgraded Far West well. If you don't know where the Far West well is, it's the one that as you turn into Mountain View.
Right across the street from me.
Yes, so they're running that because they recently upgraded that, and in order for that to be on warranty, you really kinda wanna run it.
We've been working on it for two years.
Yeah, so it's there, it's up, it's running, they're finding out all they need to with that, figuring out how that goes, so. Last year, they didn't run it very much at all, but we had enough water to make it through the year.
They ran a lot deeper.
Yeah, so they did all the things they needed. The other thing that happened at Bonavista is, we purchased land for our, our new well slash tank at, uh, Rocky Point from the Marriott's. So another resource for us. So that's been something that's been in the works for probably eight, nine months, actually, well, maybe even longer than that, because negotiations started when Randy was still alive.
Who purchased it?
Bonavista.
Bonavista did.
Bonavista is gonna own, or does own, it's already recorded and all that. You know, that up there, it's high enough, guess what? That's gonna help with water, all the things. Yeah, um, the, I, I found it a little bit funny, so they worked it out with Marriott's, so guess who has the contract to help with the site? And of course, they're gonna just let them take whatever gravel and dirt rock they want from there, like. So I, I'm gonna say they're kinda getting paid twice.
No.
So, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but that was a lot of stuff to go over.
Uh, I do have just one more quick thing.
Okay, you're the one saying one more.
I won't tease you.
Love it?
I won't tease you for two weeks.
You're fine.
Uh, just Memorial Day, everything is coming together for, for Memorial Day. At nine o'clock on the twenty-seventh, like, what's the, is that the twenty-seventh? Uh, Memorial Day, we're going to have a memorial service out at Smith Family Park. We have a, a young man that's going to speak of his. We have a, a young man that's going to speak of his relatives, the Marklins, who were from Far West who were actually killed in two different wars. So it's going to be, you know, a brief little talk. Bob Lind helped get us a bugler for the taps. We have the, the flag ceremony lined out. So at nine o'clock, if you can be there, it won't be long, but it should be a nice event with everything that's coming to place.
Our local veterans will be doing their twice a year flag change up. Dave, do we have a flag? Okay. Good thing we're asking. So we have a flag, a bugler and a speaker.
What more could you ask for?
Have we invited our legislators, our local legislators?
I can do that again. I have pretty much every other time usually it was Veterans Day, but absolutely. We're going to, we're going to spread this out for all of this kind of, it's really cool. Some, some of the, I know Lou remembers Joel Markman. It's his son talking about his grandfather who is carved out in this memorial out here. KIA in World War II. That's part of what he's going to be talking about. So this is going to be pretty special for Far West, I think, personally. Thank you for reminding me about that.
Thanks for all those that have participated in getting that put together.
Yeah, and we have one last agenda item.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you all. Hi Lou.